And we have two panels to come up and then we'll also continue open comment for the public. Thank all the members for being here. Mr. Christmas, can you please call the next panel, please?
Would Mary Yee Akonki Washington and Gail Looney please come forward? You will each have two minutes to speak. Again, that's Mary Yee Akonki Washington and Gail Looney, please.
Please state your name for the record and please begin.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members, Members of the Public, and John Christian, John Christmas. My name is Mary Yee. I've been involved in urban planning and public education and immigrant issues for over fifty years in Philadelphia. I've been an advocate and organizer for the Chinatown community since the struggle over the Vine Street Expressway alignment. Since then, the community has been continually threatened by projects, some of which we've been able to prevent from seriously jeopardizing our community, and some we've had to tolerate. For instance, Independence Mall Four, the Community Rail Tunnel, Market Street East, the Phillies Baseball Stadium, the Convention Center, the Federal Prison, and before the arena, the Lockswitz Casino. Despite these projects, the impact of the Vine Street Expressway, Market Street East, and Convention Center, and the Community Rail Tunnel, which directly affected Chinatown, we have survived as one of the most vibrant and vital Chinatowns in Canada and the U.S. A walk through Chinatown, north and south of Vine Street, will attest to the social, economic, and institutional activity of our neighborhood. So I want to say that the Chinatown community, over ninety-three percent of people who came to public meetings and answered a survey, are against the arena and have committed not to sign the Community Benefits Agreement. Why? Because we believe that the arena is a existential threat, that there's no mitigation that can really make us whole. So why is the arena a bad idea? First of all, the site is too small. Okay, that's one reason. Inga Safran has talked about this. And the second reason is that the volume of traffic and people that will come because of the games is luminous and detrimental to economic activities, especially small retail, as well as the traffic and parking that's necessary for these businesses to survive during game and large event days. Now, the thing too is that the arena will only be occupied for ninety or, optimistically, one hundred and fifty days with events. Other than that, it is a vacant hulk, right? We talk about the failings of the Fashion District, but the Fashion District now even has a lot more foot traffic and retail activity than the arena would. Now, the other thing is that there's been a lot of public comment and outcry about the arena, and I'm hoping that folks here have tuned into that. We had two marches that had three to four thousand people marching from Chinatown to City Hall. We also have other people speaking out, like Howard Esken and WIP, who had done a poll that said seventy-nine percent of their fans who answered that were not for the arena being placed in Center City. Our own Save Chinatown Coalition survey between Christmas and January twenty twenty-four had two thousand respondents. This was an informal voluntary survey that asked people what they would like as an alternative to the arena. This data, we can discuss in more detail with people if we have private meetings with you. I think one of the main I think one of the main things is that we have no vision as a city for Market Street East. Okay, isn't this the job of city planning officials in the administration? Why was there not an investigation why Market Street East and the Fashion District failed? What land uses would work and really bring life to this part of the city? Is the arena project inspiring? Well, the Civic Design Review Committee didn't think so. They said it was essentially half-baked and pretty boring. Okay. Now, now, common sense will tell us, since I mentioned how many days the arena would be occupied. And in terms of jobs, yes, there are construction jobs will be full-time during demolition and construction, and part-time jobs for the concessionaires in the arena. But other than that, we're not talking about a lot of full-time, long-term jobs. Okay, there's more going on in the Fashion District right now than what the arena proposes in terms of foot traffic and economic activity. So why can't the city issue an RFP for a master plan? You know, so the question is, why should the city lock itself into a commitment for predominantly singular land use that will take five to seven years to build and have a lifespan of twenty-five to thirty years? I think the city risks a third debacle on Market Street East. It seems clear that big money is driving this train. Are we allowing billionaires to make public policy rather than looking at citizens, peoples who are ordinary working people and taxpayers, and what benefits them? I wanted to say a couple of words about the Community Benefits Agreement. At best, it's a misnomer. At worst, it is a fabrication or a lie. The community was not part of this. Moreover, the fifty million dollars that the Sixers promised is not even this year's salary for Joe L. Embiid, which is fifty-five. And he has a contract for the next three years for sixty-five a year. So this is an insult, really, to us that there's a fifty-million-dollar proposal for a CBA. So the only thing I want to say about that is that is Trump change.
Thank you, Ms. Shee. But Ms. Shee, you got to wrap it up.
So please do not contribute to the death spiral of SEPTA or the death mill of Chinatown.
Thank you, Ms. Shee. Thank you very much. Ms. Washington?
Good afternoon. My name is Akonki. I am a social studies specialist for the School District of Philadelphia. History, I write history curriculum, so I want to ask us to think historically. I'll start. Malcolm X said, "Of all our studies, history is best qualified to reward our research." He said this because studying history is supposed to help us not repeat the mistakes of the past. Here in Philadelphia, many of us know the history of black communities in West Philadelphia being displaced by urban renewal policies. Those are policies that people voted on, they agreed on. These policies offered federal funding and tax abatements to developers who were supposed to develop affordable housing and bring jobs. They did not. Communities were destroyed, and we talk about the unintended consequences of these policies. But now we know. And if that example is too far removed, or we can't relate to it because those developers were not arena developers, I'd like to offer you another example. The plan for the Seventy-Sixers to build the arena on top of a vibrant community mirrors the construction of the Barclay Center in Brooklyn. The tale of the Barclay Center has been woven to describe this development as a response to a community's desire for a Brooklyn basketball team, the Nets. Nobody wanted the Nets. Nothing could be further from the truth. When you drive to downtown Brooklyn now and gaze upon the monstrous building on top of the Old Navy Yard, there's nothing there to remind you of the vision before the community lost its battle to the rich. Where the Barclay Center now sits was initially supposed to be an Atlantic Yards development, a ten-year project that would provide thousands of units of affordable housing. Bruce Ratner used the development company Forest City Ratner to purchase the area, and as usual, he promised affordable housing, development, and jobs. The original proposal was never realized. Okay, what was ushered into the Barclay Center was the Barclay Center. The developers brought in Jay-Z, a rapper from Brooklyn, who's also now promoting vouchers as a progressive, and he became part-owner of Brooklyn Nets and the Barclay Center. The development was sold as revitalization of downtown Brooklyn. It is clear how the development was good for them, but the community knew that the development would increase traffic and cause rents to skyrocket, ushering in gentrification, the very polite word for ethnic cleansing and displacement. The community fought it. They protested, they filed lawsuits. The Barclay Center still went up. In June two thousand and sixteen, developers offered a lottery for ten affordable apartments, only ten. The community was given was given ten apartments for ten million dollars in tax credits and abatements. To date, the residents in Brooklyn have an ongoing battle with the arena over noise and traffic that they swore would not happen. Although these city issues fine, they're not enough to make the developers make substantial changes. As Brooklyn revitalization in two thousand and twenty-three, the Barclay Center reported, okay, a loss of seventy-six million dollars. So we have to remember, the community didn't get their jobs, they didn't get their apartments, and they're losing money. So the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. There is a pattern of this, and if we let it go on, we can't say unintended consequences anymore.
Thank you very much. State your name and record. State your name for the record and please begin.
Hello, my name is Gail Looney. I am a resident of the Fifth Councilmatic District. I am very familiar with the fight around stadiums and Community Benefits Agreements. I was a participant in the battle with Temple University and a thirty-five-thousand-seat stadium in North Central Philadelphia, which they have just conceded, okay? But in addition, in two thousand and eight, there was a introduction of a CBA being amended, and some of the council people are still here, some of them are not. And myself and a group of, from my RCO, which is the Uptown Entertainment Development Corporation, rewrote a CBA to say, "This is what communities need with regards to CBAs." I'm not going to sit here and retell because my colleagues did an amazing job letting you guys know that we did our homework as individuals and community members on what this is all about. We learned what we needed to learn, and we researched what we needed to research so that we could come here and talk to you guys and let you know. This is not our job, this is our passion. The problem here is, there is no communication going back and forth. It's a one-sided communication. And the CBA is not a CBA if the community is not engaged or involved. You cannot keep ramming things and information and places and neighborhoods where people live, whether their neighborhood is decimated or whether they have the most prestigious neighborhood. You don't want a stadium in your prestigious neighborhood. I don't want a stadium in my neighborhood either. And especially when you have not come to me and said, "Let's sit down at the table together and talk and exchange ideas." This city has to become more creative and more inclusive of the constituencies that you are representing. It is very traumatizing and it's very disrespectful. When we come here, we try to give council respect. We voted for you guys to represent us, and we feel disrespected when you don't represent us in the way that we deserve. We fight every day for what we have, and we don't have a lot, but we are here. We are fighting for what we have, and we deserve better from you as our council people. Thank you.
Claire Wan, Sonya Chen, and Lena Cabral. Are you deferring your time? I'm calling the next panel. Your chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Glatia.
My question is for Ms. Looney. Thank you so much for coming to speak with us today. I really respect and admire your work and your community's fight. I wanted to know if you can expound and talk more about the similarities and differences between this arena proposal and the proposed stadium in North Philadelphia. For example, in terms of the community engagement process, the Community Benefits Agreement job projections, as well as the potential negative impacts on surrounding neighborhoods, what similarities and differences do you see?
The similarities are the same. We were told the same story, you know? The stadium would provide jobs for the community, you know? We're doing this. And let me go here. Temple University owned the land that the stadium was to go on, but they are not a neighbor. They were not neighborly. They still are not neighborly, okay? And let's be real, that's a real thing, okay? And that's very, very important. When you select and cherry pick who you want to talk to, that's not cool either. That's disrespectful because there is a community there that really exists. It might not be the community that you guys see or in your community, but it is a community there, okay? So they told us that they would provide, you know, jobs for the neighborhood, and it would bring in additional jobs for the community. They did not talk about the traffic. They didn't want to talk about the traffic. They wanted to close off a street, okay? Which meant that the state had to approve a street being closed. And you're talking to people in the neighborhood who you disrespect and said, "Oh, don't go beyond Eighteenth and Diamond Street because the neighborhood and the neighbors around there are just terrible people. They don't have jobs, they're a bunch of drug addicts, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da." Okay, but that neighborhood produced police officers, firefighters, great teachers, teachers who are still there, you know? And I ain't no slouch either, okay? I live there. I grew up there, okay? So they told us all of this, but we pounded them. We pounded them. We asked for meetings. We asked to come to their meetings. They wouldn't let us in. They wouldn't let us know when they had meetings. So we had to just, you know, kind of like, you know, bum rush them. Yeah, we had people who were there. Their unions worked with us. Their students worked with us. They told us when they were having meetings so we could show up. We tried to get information. We even had a meeting with them where they were going to tell us, "You don't tell people in the neighborhood that you are supposed to be sharing space with. You don't tell people you're supposed to talk to people," okay? No, we not the brightest light bulbs in the box, but neither were they. And this is the same situation.
Well, you seem pretty bright to me. Thank you so much for your work and for being here. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you for your testimony. Sister said, "I ain't no slouch either." No, that's right.
Will Claire Wan, Sonya Chen, and Lena Cabral please come forward? Claire Wan, Sonya Chen, and Lena Cabral, please come forward. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Just state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? My name is Claire. Good morning, good afternoon, Council members of the public. I'm a teacher and I have taught K and one for years. I am also a PhD candidate at the Penn's Graduate School of Education. In Philadelphia, I work at the Ginger Arts Center in Chinatown that serves high school and college youth from across the city. Between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, the district closed thirty schools. That's ten percent of its traditional public school buildings to address a one-point-three-five-billion-budget deficit. As a result, absences and suspensions increased significantly for displaced students. But this is not an issue of the past, as our school board is once again revisiting mass school closures as a solution to our lack of funding and school crisis. Our students often share their experiences: school closures, overcrowded classrooms, no books, no air conditioning or heating, asbestos in our walls, and a host of other structural issues. Our school facilities and the deteriorating conditions remain to be one of our city's most urgent issues. Where are the plans to prioritize our students, the future of Philadelphia? Why do billionaire developers get more benefits than them in this deal? As a result of the proposed agreement, the billionaire developers are able to cut a deal under the guise of the pilot as being a generous gesture to our schools, when in actuality, our city would be granting them a massive tax break. They are robbing our city's children and families of a quality education. They negotiated a deal to pay our schools less than three million a year, again, at the cost of our students. It is important to note, as some of our council members have astutely pointed out, there are clear discrepancies in these projections. CSL stated forty, sorry, fifty-four-point-seven million. Mayor Parker stated a net present value of forty-two million, and PIDC stated two-point-eight per year with escalators with the school board. But based on the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four school budget, this promise and vague pilot amount and plan is only enough to support about one-hundred-and-twenty-five students per year. One-hundred-and-twenty-five. That's only point-zero-six percent of our public schools' population. And based on the legislation, it is unclear when the pilots will begin and how long they will last. Why should our families, students, and teachers trust these promises after what the Sixers did in Camden? Based on the new valuation of the arena, if they paid traditional taxes, they would have to pay at least eight-hundred-and-seventy-one million, assuming zero percent inflation. Including three percent inflation, their total tax bill would be one-point-five billion. Fifty-six, respectfully, other panelists have had six minutes. I would like to claim my time. Fifty-six percent, as I was saying, fifty-six percent of the city's property tax revenue would and should go to the school district. If they paid full property tax, the Philadelphia School District would get at least four-hundred million over the next few decades. Instead, developers are only paying fifty million, possibly more, but that's unclear as we've heard. That's a minimum of three-hundred-and-fifty million that they're actively choosing not to put into our schools, and you, if you allow this arena to be built. Given that it took forty-four million dollars to build Philly's last school, the Sixers' three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar tax break cheats Philly out of eight schools. That's almost five thousand students without healthy, safe classrooms so billionaires can get richer. However, the arena's value, like most real estate, will likely go up over their lease, so the tax savings to the billionaires will likely be even more. How is it fair that some of our most vulnerable populations, our young children and youth, have to sacrifice their futures for this project that will ultimately take funding they rightfully deserve and urgently need from them? Our students and future generations deserve better. Teams such as the Golden State Warriors and SF not only pay their full tax bill of nineteen-point-five million last year, but also fund local transit twenty-seven million upfront for the transit stop construction and about ten million each year based on the Warriors' revenue. Seventy-six-place developers have a choice to do better for our schools, and they're choosing not to. Instead, they're holding the schools hostages, forcing the city to accept whatever deal they put on the table. Instead of advocating for our schools, are we supposed to just take whatever deal these developers stronghold us into accepting? These billionaire developers won't pay their due taxes, and our schools, families, and students are those who will ultimately suffer the consequences and foot the bill. Mayor Parker cited a return on investment for supporting the arena, but studies show that education significantly improves economic growth and when we invest in our people, skills, creativity, and innovative capacities. Investing in quality education for all of our students only benefits our city's economic and health outcomes. So as our elected officials, you are meant to be the champions for our school kids, and our students deserve you fighting for more. We all agree that our schools need more funding. We do. But this, this is a lowball offer to one of our city's most pressing issues. People want long-term policy solutions, not a temporary corporate bailout. Thank you.
Ms. Chen, state your name for the record and please begin.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members and Staff, and Members of the Public. My name is Sonya Chen, and I am a postdoctoral researcher at the University of Pennsylvania, where I research the politics of race and racial inequality. I received my PhD in politics and social policy and have lived in the Philadelphia area for almost seven years. Seventy-six DevCo has repeatedly claimed that the proposed arena will create nine thousand jobs. It sounds like a pretty great promise, but that's all it is, a promise. Why are we taking this number at face value when the study that allegedly produced this number has not been released to the public? If Seventy-six DevCo is so confident in all the jobs it will create, then it should have nothing to hide. Meanwhile, the city's own economic study projects seven-hundred-and-ten jobs, but according to the study's sensitivity analysis, it could be as few as four-hundred-and-ninety jobs over thirty-two years. That would be fifteen new jobs a year, a far cry from the claims of Seventy-six DevCo. When we only think in terms of the arena's impact on new jobs, we don't account for the numbers of jobs lost. What happens to the workers in the third of the Fashion District the arena will displace? What happens to the workers at the fifty percent of Chinatown businesses that the city's community impact study projected would be negatively affected? Seventy-six DevCo has touted its Economic Opportunity Plan for a diverse workforce, but what about the already diverse workforce here in Center City that stands to lose their jobs? Without a proper economic impact study that assesses the net impact on jobs in Center City, it is simply irresponsible to move forward with the arena proposal. Seventy-six DevCo has also touted its Economic Opportunity Plan as a boon for communities of color. Every year, the city assesses the success rates of active economic opportunity plans that are meant to promote the meaningful participation of minority, women, and disabled-owned businesses. In two thousand and twenty-three, according to the city's own number, only thirty-nine percent of projects met their EOP goals. In two thousand and twenty-two, the number was thirty-six percent. That means two out of three economic opportunity plans fail, and Seventy-six DevCo will almost certainly fail as well, given their history of failure to live up to the promises, to their promises, to black and brown businesses. In two thousand and twenty-four, according to Seventy-six DevCo's own reporting, just three percent of all its total vendors and suppliers were certified minority-owned. To understand what might very well happen here in Philadelphia when we hand developers hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks for a hollow promise of jobs, we can look to Camden. What happened after the city gave multiple corporations hundreds of millions of dollars in these tax breaks, including the Seventy-Sixers' practice facility? Camden's budget deficit ballooned, draining money from public schools and infrastructure improvement, all for nine jobs they created for Camden residents. Let me repeat that again. The Sixers promised nearly three hundred jobs to Camden residents, and today, there are nine. The argument for the, respectfully, the first panel of today had one hour, so I think we can take a few more minutes. The argument for the proposed arena relies on the creation of false choices that we don't have to accept. They say if you don't choose the arena, Market East will continue to be dilapidated. They say if you don't choose the arena, there won't be jobs. But the truth is, there are still so many unanswered questions about the true impact of the true about the true impact of econo, the true economic impact of 76 Place. What are the long-term effects of giving a $600 million tax break to 76 Devco for the city's budget deficit? Can 76 Devco really live up to its lofty promises of meaningfully including minority-owned workers and businesses in this project when their track record says otherwise? And will there even be a net gain in jobs at all? Let us not forget that playbook of pitting Black and Asian workers against one another has long been used in American history. And it is our responsibility, it is your responsibility, council, to refuse to be a part of that history. Because, because the only people who stand to gain from pitting workers against one another are the white billionaires whose net worth is almost certainly greater than every single person in this room right now combined. We don't have to look far to see that American trust in government is at an all-time low. But what is the one part of government that the American people still have trust in? It is local government, the very office the people of Philadelphia voted you into to represent our interests. But this trust has to be earned and nurtured. What happens if the people of Philadelphia, 70% of whom who oppose the arena, watch you rush through a proposal with so many unanswered questions? If you move forward without the necessary due diligence, it would irrevocably destroy the very fabric of our local democracy for years to come. Thank you.
State your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
My name is Leona Cabral. Good afternoon. I am a Philly resident, education scholar, and a senior research associate at Research for Action in Philadelphia. I'm also the mother of a Philly student. I'm here this afternoon to express my deep concern about the unwanted changes this arena would bring to our city and the moral compass of a city council that would choose an arena over its citizens. The main selling points of an arena, construction jobs, economic revitalization of the area, and increased tax revenue for the city are unlikely. The one certainty is that a new arena owned and operated by the ownership group of the 76ers would increase the wealth of that small group of individuals tenfold. That's the only guarantee. Meanwhile, amid the wealth that numbers we're talking about, an MBA franchise valued at $4 billion, an owner who brags about a six-figure wine collection as art, our city's schoolchildren are facing a new round of school closings. Research shows that individual children in Philadelphia schools struggle to access even the most basic needs: clean drinking water, air conditioner, safe spaces to play. And here we are rushing a process for a state-of-the-art playground for billionaires rather than thinking through what priorities can actually be met by development. This city, our schools, and our students cannot afford the potential $1 billion in ta, in lost tax revenue a new arena could bring. And the $50 million CBA deal that the mayor negotiated would not begin to meet the needs of Philadelphia's public schools. A new arena in a city, in a school district that has a shortage of counselors, outdated facilities, asbestos, and a lack of modern instructional materials? A new arena in a district that has only one full-time librarian, one full-time librarian? Consider this data point. In the last year in Philadelphia, only 18% of public school students participated in school athletics compared to 53% of students in the rest of the state's public schools. Philadelphia spent $94 per student on athletics compared to the rest of the state's average of 365 per student. We know that Philadelphia has always been one of the most inadequately funded school districts in the Commonwealth. Put simply, Philadelphia cannot support a new arena. We cannot afford to bankroll millionaires. It's them or our students. Who are you going to choose? Despite continual claims from teen owners that building new stadiums will result in economic boons and employment growth, research consistently shows that it is not a sound investment and does not result in the economic benefits initially promised. Those who stand to profit from a new arena in Chinatown are few in number. Please, please put people and our children over them. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just heard the testimony about the school district of Philadelphia in connection to the arena. I was wondering if you could just elaborate a little bit more about how, how the arena is connected to the school district of Philadelphia's investment in terms of dollars and funds? I'd want to hear from your perspective. You just spoke on it.
Well, I'll start, but I wonder if you'd like to contribute. I mean, I would say that we're one city, right? With certain investments that we need to make, and this would result in lost tax revenue that would impact the school district.
How would, how do we result in lost tax revenue?
How would what?
What, what are your findings on the lost tax revenue for the school district?
I'm citing the, the study that was done that said the potential revenue and lost taxes would be, could be around $1 billion. That's not my, I did not do that data analysis myself, but I'm pulling it from the study. Also, the CBA deal and, and pilots in general are terrible for our city and our schools, as we've seen before. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so that, is that my gun? Thank you. I believe you're citing the study done by Arthur Acolin, last name A-C-O-L-I-N. He actually was a panelist a couple of sessions ago. But to your question, I just wanted to reiterate, like, to your point earlier, 56% of our city's property tax revenue goes to our school district, right? We all should know that. And so when we think about the arena and the tax revenue that it would make, and also then therefore the tax break that we would be affording the billionaires, that's money that's directly taken from our school district.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would Mr. Christmas, you please call the next panel, please?
Would Daoud Bay, Patrick Zhang, and Jenna Osmond please come forward? Again, Daoud Bay, Patrick Zhang, Jenna Osmond, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Hi, council members. My name is Patrick Zhang. I've been a Philadelphia area resident for almost two decades. So you've heard that the arena will devastate this city, but what you should also know is that the arena will also... Yes, of course. The arena will also destroy the soul of minority communities, not just within Philadelphia, but miles outside the city limits. I grew up in the Western Philadelphia suburbs, so admittedly Chinatown is not my hometown, but it was a life raft. As a young, impressionable child of immigrants growing up in the more homogeneous suburbs, my environment taught me that my identity, my background were burdens to oppress or insecurities to erase. So I struggled every day to accept who I am, which resulted in failing mental health, social isolation, and poor academic performance. But it was not until I was a teenager, independently venturing into Chinatown to work, hang out, and eat, when things began to change. Learning about the history of the neighborhood and witnessing the community fostered there, for the first time in my life, I was authentically proud of my Asian-American identity, for my Chinese-American identity, to be specific. Through Chinatown, I was exposed to the languages, the traditions, the art and cuisine of my heritage not found in such a concentration anywhere else regionally. Chinatown allowed me to feel better connected to my family, my ancestors, and my community. But most importantly, Chinatown taught me empowerment and self-love. And I would not be who I am now without the Chinatown that exists today. However, it has been consistently predicted that the neighborhood's businesses and community institutions will be smothered by the arena if it is allowed to be built. The 76ers' place will consequently harm Asian immigrant communities, yes, within Philadelphia, but also in the greater Philly region and beyond. It's not just Chinatown that needs Chinatown, and it's not just Philly that needs Chinatown, but hundreds in the greater region who feel lost or ashamed of who they are, those of a diaspora who are uprooted and perhaps only know the value of their heritage through Chinatown. They all, we all need this neighborhood to not only exist, but to thrive. Because minorities and immigrants exist in American society which intends to beat us down. And as council members, I hope you may protect the people that you represent, especially vulnerable minority communities, by preserving the few spaces that they have left for their well-being. Everyone deserves the dignity to exist without shame. And Chinatown grants Asian immigrant communities within and outside of Philadelphia that dignity. And it's for this reason, as well as everything else that you've heard today and the past few days, that you must not allow the development of the 76ers' place. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
How you doing? My name is Daoud Bay, and I wanted to first thank you guys for allowing this type of platform to give multiple people the opportunity to speak as related to how this is going to impact multiple communities.
Speaking to the microphone.
Yep, multiple communities within this Philadelphia. I have a statement that I want to read, but I'm, I promise you, it won't take as long as others. But at the end of the day, I want to speak from my statement, but I also want to add some context to behind what I'm saying. As president of Fine Print Construction, a certified minority business enterprise, I'm thrilled to hear of Mayor Sherrill's Parker approval of the Philadelphia 76ers' state-of-the-art arena in, in Market East area. This $1.9 billion investment is just the beginning of a transformative economic opportunity that will benefit the entire city of Philadelphia. If we plan, if we play our cards right, we can leverage this $1.9 billion project into over $20 billion in economic impact. Philadelphia has a large commercial buildings that are underutilized. And truly to be a first-class city, we need to, we need an area, an arena downtown. The vibrancy and energy of downtown contribute to the nostalgia and charm of a great city like New York and Los Angeles. The new, the new 76ers' arena will not only bring excitement and economic growth to the Market East area, but will also create lasting benefits throughout the entire Philadelphia. This project represents a historic opportunity for economic inclusion, particularly for Black and Brown communities. Through a comprehensive community impact agreement, we can ensure that the benefits of this development reach those in needed, meets those who need it most. I look forward to the opportunity this arena will bring and the role Fine Print Construction will play in helping to shape the future of this great city. Thank you. But I, I've been listening online. I've been listening on the internet and everything as related to some of the opinions about this arena. And a lot of things I've really never heard yet is, how would this impact this city from a cultural perspective? Like, bottom line, like, you know, we, we talking about this Philadelphia 76ers becoming a fandom? What? I don't know what we going to name them. But at the end of the day, I know the benefits that arenas could bring to certain communities. I'm from South Philly. We got the Sixers, still. We have the Philadelphia Flyers. We had the Eagles. And our communities is beautiful. It brings our communities together, actually. Like, going down, walking from Tasker Street, Broughton Tasker, just to walk down and South Philly down in the neighborhood of the arenas, it's one of the biggest thrills in Philadelphia. Like, so at the end of the day, I just wanted to just remind us of the importance of this type of arena, to come to Philadelphia, to impact our communities. And everybody love to hate New York City, right? But we love it, though. We love the traffic. We love the horns. We love all the, the, the cabs drivers and everything riding past, putting their fingers up at us and everything. But at the end of the day, in order for this to be a true first-class city, every place that I don't visit, they got, they got arenas right downtown. So I just wanted to encourage this panel here to support the arena. And let's build, baby, you know? And like the great Leon Sullivan said, jobs, 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 jobs. We need jobs here in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Can you say your first and your last name? And please begin your testimony.
My name is Jenna Osmond. I was born and raised in Philadelphia, and I've lived in Washington Square West since 1998. My home is exactly five blocks south of the proposed arena site on Spruce Street. Thank you to the council members for taking the time to listen to the people. You should know that we're listening closely to all of you, too. The whole city is watching to see where you come down on this issue, and your vote on the arena will be your legacy. When the 76ers, when the 76ers' reps were here and were challenged on why their project was worth the loss of property tax dollars that could be used for our city's schools and other needs, they defended their pilot deal as standard practice that they expected to be treated just like all other arena projects. The problem is, this is not like any other arena project, not just in Philadelphia, but in the nation. This is the only arena project that requires 40% of its patrons take public transportation so that the city does not shut down around it. This is the only arena that offers zero public space for attendees to gather anywhere near it. This is the only project without a viable pedestrian plan. This is the only arena project two blocks from the city's only Level One trauma center. And before you bring up San Francisco's Chase Center, please note that the hospital next to their stadium is a research hospital, and their trauma center is two miles away. Add to that the fact that our public transit system relies on the whims of who controls the state legislature, and you have a recipe for certain disaster, not just for Chinatown, but for the entire center of our city. And you all know that. You all know that there's no way to make the logistics work. To quote Councilwoman Cindy Bass, and yet, here we are. Last week, David Adelman posted a video tour of the L.A. Clippers' Intuit Dome, which he called "an example of what the best arenas have to offer", including an 80,000-square-foot public plaza, which on its own is almost half of the entire lot size of 76 Place. If he knows that that is what's best, you know it, too. In the first week of testimony, I heard an arena supporter ask you to vote yes so the magic could happen. I wish I believed in that magic, that this arena project could resolve our city's inequities, that it could bring opportunities to some without destroying the livelihoods and neighborhoods of others. But it won't. I urge you to respect the facts of this proposal, not the fantasy, and to vote no on this project.
Would Sheemin Low, Cindy Miller, Catherine Garth, and Sidney Rachin please come forward? Again, Sheemin Low, Cindy Miller, Catherine Garth, Sidney Rachin, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. And we are going to ask that you adhere to the buzzer as close as possible, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Low. I'm a MMT for the last 24 years, paramedic trainer as well. For the record, South of Market Street, there's a stroke center, a burn center, Waleside Emergency Room, Rockman Hospital, Pennsylvania, and Jefferson. Keep that in mind. All of those wonderful facilities and the providers who work there are useless. We are nothing if the dying patient can come to us in time. I wanted to speak today because the developer and the mayor of this proposed arena seem to have convinced some of you that a little traffic, 18,000 arena, that's about two blocks away from one of the first trauma Level One center. That extra time of the ambulance is okay. That's what they make you believe. But being late to the EOR is the problem. Just so you know, according to the city traffic study, not our study, there's multiple intersection receive a PANDO rating less than a D, and there was one getting an F in every scenario, which is a seven and race. The developer had changed their tune on how they deal with the pedestrian overflow about after and before the event. First, they said they're going to close 10th and 11th between Market and Arch. And then we're going to keep on one lane open. And this, in this hearing, they say, oh, for the sake of emergency care, all lanes should maintain open. But where will the people go? The 18,000 people coming in and leaving the stadium? But where will the people go, the 18,000 people coming in and leaving the stadium? In our scenario, if someone need emergency care in the wrong place, at the wrong time, the trip to the ER will be long and delayed. This extra mile will be different between staying alive or death. Heart attacks, stroke, gunshot, those are the one that dire and the time sensitive for us to treat. It takes us a little as five minutes for one person to bleed out, just keep that in mind, or any other trauma injuries. For stroke patients, we say times equal brain. Every minute stroke happened untreated diminishes the chances of recovery and increases of chances of permanent brain damage. Everyone should asking if this is fair for the patient to have the worst outcome because of the bad idea. Is it right for the developer to potentially cause chaos so close to the city-only Level One trauma center? And one more question, which genius thought that putting a right-side drop-off right next to the hospital is a good idea? Whoever put this plan together, who vote through this, chose to ignore the obvious. The arena is bad for the health of the Philadelphia city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name. Please state your name and proceed with your testimony. And I do want to just point out that we, we want to stick to the two-minute bell because we don't want to lose people who have signed up to testify. If it goes on longer, then we'll begin to lose people who have to leave. So we just want to be respectful of everybody's time. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, council members and President Johnson, who is not here right now. My name is Cindy Miller, and I'm a 40-year resident of West Philly and District Three. And my illustrious council member sits here, Jamie Gautier. And I vote and I pay taxes. The testimonies listing the hundreds of reasons as to how this arena would be a major failure and racist stain on our city have all been true. An injury to one is an injury to all. But the root of this issue is that this is a class struggle. Three billionaires who don't even live in the city represent the ruling classes versus the people, the working-class residents who have given testimony here and are not members of the money-powered ruling class. Reverend Carl Day highlighted how Black males are being left out of city project planning for the future and usually not even considered. Residents and business owners in Chinatown are routinely disregarded and disrespected. Gabor Hood residents feel erased in this process. Washington West folks feel passed over. But all these groups are not members of the money-powered ruling class, so they can be ignored. Why, over and over again, are we putting our faith in the ruling class to solve our problems? We are being hoodwinked by having money waved under our noses. It seems that supporters of this arena and city council want to just accept these promises and believe these unreal promises and sign off. These billionaires are not even Philadelphians. Why do we allow them to barge in and build in our city? Look at Washington DC's Chinatown. Read the latest Scepter reports. Listen to doctors and ambulance drivers at Jefferson. Look at David Edelman's track record as a developer and landlord in West Philly. There's a city school crisis. There's a mental health response crisis, houselessness, and addiction. Problems are everywhere. Trump just got re-elected. And we're spending 40 hours of debate and testimony on this foolishness?
Ms. Miller.
One last bit. You believe that these developers are coming from a place of concern, but they're just throwing money around? It's the classic carrot and the stick. Pay attention. And in the words of a great man, you are being bamboozled. Solidarity to the working class.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. And if you could stay within the two-minute buzzer, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sidney Ra Chen, and I'm a resident of Brewery Town. Thank you, Councilmember Jeffrey Young Jr., for voting no on the arena legislation. I'm a restaurant worker and recently joined the Rice Coalition after giving a testimonial. I got into the industry after being inspired by my grandparents' cooking. Both sets of my grandparents owned restaurants in Chinatown, including Harmony on 9th Street and Happy Garden on 10th Street where Mainlyowa now is. When I was a kid, I would spend a lot of time in the restaurants after going to preschool in Chinatown. This helped shape my culinary viewpoint and has become the reason why I cook professionally. As I learned from my last restaurant job, so many industry folks spend time post-shift or on their few days off in Chinatown. One of the favorites that was brought up during morning prep conversations was Tai Lake as a beloved hangout spot. Chinatown is one of the few places open almost every day of the year, as well as late nights. So it makes it perfect for industry people to hang out at. Chinatown has also shifted the restaurant scene culturally as a city staple Vietnam restaurant recently won a coveted Jane's Beard Award. The Seventy Sixers arena would impact these small businesses that keep the restaurant industry fueled and refreshed. Our city's culture thrives off of our vibrant small businesses, especially Philadelphia's restaurants. Chinatown is a destination for so many in the region and beyond. Instead, we should be invested into infrastructure that supports our community, especially our youth. Let's reimagine how we can revitalize our city without harm in the communities that make our city so unique. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would Alexandra Greco, Lynn Denton, Barb Hadley, and Letty Thaw please come forward? Again, would Alexandra Greco, Lynn Denton, Barb Hadley, and Letty Thaw please come forward? You will each have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Greco, if you could start, please state your name for the record and proceed.
Hi, my name is Lynn Denton. I'm a visual artist and a filmmaker. And I've lived in Center City in District One for over 30 years. I have worked with children in the public schools for much of that time. I've conducted projects for mural arts, for, I've shown at the ICA and at the Pennsylvania Academy. I am appalled that we would even consider giving these people, these developers, these billionaires, the right to endanger Chinatown, which is a cultural treasure. It's a cultural treasure that we will never be able to replace. Now, New York has made some mistakes with Grand Central, with the Grand Central Station, with, with the things that they, with, with Madison Square Garden and their mistakes in tearing down Madison Square Garden because they will never get a monument like that again. And I am also appalled that we are taking our cultural heritage and, and throwing it away for a few billionaires' pocketbooks. I'd like to say that the arts in Philadelphia bring in 429 million in tax revenue. And I looked on the GPCA website and found out the exact figures for what, what the income generate, what generates this income. And the, the truth is that it's arts and culture. And that encompasses a lot of things. It encompasses Chinatown and the fact that we will, if we let this go through, we will lose a cultural treasure. I have known, I've known how precious this historic treasure is. Okay, I'll wind it up. But I want to tell you, as a person who, as an artist who's lived in Philadelphia and seen the changes in my neighborhood over a period of 40 years, we will never get the opportunity again to have a cultural treasure like Chinatown if we let this go through. And we won't have the tax revenue for our children and the schools, the, the, what they deserve in the public schools. I've done a lot of projects in the public schools, and I know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon, my name is Alex Greco. I'm a constituent of District One, represented by Mark Squilla. I am a writer, artist, and educator who was born and raised in South Philadelphia, right by the stadiums. In the 36 years I have lived in South Philadelphia, I have witnessed firsthand the changes in the stadium district and the chaos and frustration such arenas can cause when not forcibly built directly on top of highly congested historic neighborhoods and pre-existing local businesses. While I am sadly not surprised that self-serving billionaires are lying, manipulating, and misrepresenting their plans to carve up the heart of our city for profit, an area, mind you, that has already seen failed corporate revitalization efforts in recent years, I am appalled that council is seriously considering accepting this demeaning treatment and abandoning the very people and communities that they have vowed to serve. Selling out and gutting our thriving Chinatown and all the citizens that rely on it, all to appease the whims of landlords who have a proven track record of not caring about the communities and lives they have to bulldoze to turn some more profit? Anyone who has tried to drive through Chinatown currently at rush hour, indeed, anyone who is even paying marginal attention, can see that this is not only a bad deal in the short term, but a costly mistake in the long term, in terms of public money and lives. As this is yet another complicating factor that would prevent Philadelphians from accessing reliable public transportation and critical emergency health services into the future and a strike, excuse me, and strike a blow on a historic cherished and vulnerable neighborhood and the people who rely on it. Perhaps the most urgent imperative is this. The next four years promised to be extremely challenging for big and little D democratic cities like Philadelphia. Philadelphians need to know, through demonstrable tangible leadership by our city council, that we will be protected, listened to, respected, and fought for by our elected representatives in council and in the mayor's office. If council shows it is willing to bend to the selfish whims of billionaires and serve up the people of Philadelphia and our treasured institutions to weak, disingenuous promises of short-term financial gain, that will not save us. What faith can we have that we will weather what comes next? The people are united for the common good. Are you with us?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Can we have you please state your name for the record and proceed?
Good afternoon. My name is Barb Hadley. I live at Fourth and Locust in District One. I moved first to Philadelphia in 1987. I have two reasons for you to vote no on the arena. First, you can't miss poverty in Philadelphia. We are one of the, we are the poorest of the largest 10 cities in the country. Until 2022, I worked as vice president for education and employment at Project Home in North Philadelphia. And I saw up close how the schools are in dire need of resources to provide an adequate education. 11th and 12th graders came to our after-school programs, Monday through Friday, hopeful to go to college. But too many couldn't read at the fifth, sixth grade, or sometimes even second grade level, 11th and 12th graders. I told myself, like, poverty is the reason for the low-quality education. That's what we all, that's what we tell ourselves. That's what we say. I paid my wage and property taxes believing in city leaders, in you included, that we will prevail to fund a good quality education as much as possible. And this will obviously not be true if you give a wealthy sports team tax breaks of more than $400 million. Secondly, what makes Philadelphia powerful and beloved are its neighborhoods. And Chinatown, yes, it's vulnerable, but at the same time, a powerful example of enduring intergenerational community. I recently met a union man from South Philadelphia, like, just two weeks ago, who said it better than I can. He said, "I'm in the union. We have enough work. We don't need the arena." I live in a great Philadelphia neighborhood. I live in a great Philadelphia neighborhood on the same street as grandchildren of people I went to high school with. If we destroy Chinatown, which took generations to build, they, we will never get it back. Be the leaders that we need. Vote no on the arena. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
I'm Letty Thaw, and I've been a Spring Garden neighborhood resident for over 45 years. So I know what it means to have access to your home limited by throngs of people, police vehicles, and sometimes Secret Service who blockade blocks. We know 4th of July, Thanksgiving, I won't go through all the celebrations on the Parkway. But if you are there at the parade, look around and you'll be able to see streets are closed so people can mingle, can go into the streets. Can you imagine the demolition, construction, and use of the arena around 11th and Market? Where are all these people going to go? The limited sidewalks for the arena, arena and six years' worth of demolition and construction will impact the ability of residents and visitors who come up from Independence Hall to go to Redding Terminal and walk around our city. Look at the current construction at 8th and Market that's disruptive to Scepter, to people, to traffic, and it's only those four corners. The arena is proposed for 18,000 people. Recently, I was at the 10,000-seat Lea Chorus Center for a concert. We all had to exit going north on Broad Street, or north on the sidewalks. The Broad Street was still open to buses, traffic, and we were all like a sausage-making machine trying to squeeze, go north on the sidewalk so we could cross Broad to go south. Just, it made me think, what's going to happen around game time here? So rather than these resolutions that amend the benefits that everybody have described that we as residents will lose, I question and ask you all as elected officials, why is the deadline for making a decision this year? Why is a private company whose lease is running out can't renegotiate? What's the rush? What are the up-to-date traffic studies? The impact on all of us, the residents and businesses and neighborhoods east abroad, not just Chinatown, but all of the residents? Jobs are certainly important, and we need them. But we need to make sure they're long-term jobs created with a guarantee of living wages and benefits, not just full-time equivalent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Stephen Sablowski, Laneyah Bond, Sonya Chen, and Daria Petragio, pardon of pronunciation. Petragio, I guess, Bagoya, please come forward. Again, that is, oh, Sonya Chen. Okay, so Stephen Sablowski, Laneyah Bond, Daria Petragoya?
Petralia.
Petralia?
Petralia, yes, there we go. Thank you.
Sorry, pardon me. That was three. And Blanche Brown, please. Okay, I guess they're not here. You will each have two minutes to speak. You will each have two minutes to speak. Please state your name, begin with your testimony.
Thank you. My name's Linnea Bond. I rent a row home with four roommates in the Spring Garden neighborhood. With a proposed arena between my home and Jefferson Hospital, I asked the council not to bet my life and my neighbors' lives on the Sixers more than having their current number of driving attendees. That would be an insane bet, even if the Sixers were funding SEPTA, but they have told you that they won't be spending any more money on our already-in-crisis public transit system, even as they would receive a max of tax cut. No wonder so many people and neighborhoods and schools and essential services in this city are struggling when billionaires get the green light to avoid paying their fair share. As a neighbor of Chinatown, I also stand beside my Asian neighbors and pointing to a long history of similar building projects across the country that have gentrified and destroyed vulnerable but culturally invaluable communities like Chinatown. I want to thank the council for standing up for our communities in moments I've seen you hold Sixers leadership responsible for these questions, but ultimately, we rely on your votes to prove that communities matter to you. I especially want to thank my own council member, Young, who has vocally opposed this arena proposal on behalf of constituents like me.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon, council members and general public. Thank you for allowing me the chance to testify. My name is Daria Petralia, and I have lived at 11th and Clinton Streets for 20 years. So this really impacts me, and I want an opportunity to speak. I've never done this before, so I think it's very important. I believe the 76ers Arena will definitely be a bad thing for Philadelphia and all of us here. City Hall is prioritizing a priority and desire of billionaires instead of focusing on what Philadelphia really needs: affordable housing, safe schools, and funding of all of our public services. The arena plan has no projections for working Philadelphians, but plenty of projections for billionaires. The process has been rushed, and the so-called CBA was negotiated in secret between the mayor and the billionaires sidelining our community voices. So I'm glad we have an opportunity to speak right now. The traffic will definitely be horrible. You know the neighborhood already, it's already bad, and with the arena, it's just gonna be even worse. The arena will put more stress on the already struggling transit system. We already don't have reliable public access to schools and work. The Sixers want to build on top of Jefferson Station, but building on top of a transit hub will require upgrades and additional costs. There will be added costs for increased service of regional rail, Broad Street Line, and also the Market Frankfurt Line. Who's paying for the upgrades to Jefferson Station? And the other transit costs that the construction will require. Currently, there is no deal in place between the Sixers and SEPTA, and no estimated cost to this system. Neighboring Chinatown, which we've heard already, and the local businesses will surely suffer. How could small businesses continue when their neighborhood is going to be dismantled? It's a treasure, just like it's been stated before. Also, how will this project access Jefferson Hospital, which already is a busy neighborhood, getting people that are having trauma, emergencies, it's a Level 1 Trauma Center, and it's right in the middle of the proposed arena. It's already a very busy area without the arena. And those are my feelings. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Stephen Sobloski. A little while ago, we heard someone mention, "Where's the creativity?" And I offer some creativity with a proposed site other than Market Street. Just like Madison Square Garden and Penn Station in New York City, build a stadium in the lot at 30th Street for a mega seating 60% larger than 18,500 seats, approximately 30,000 seats. Why not make something very huge? We only have one chance to make it correct, so therefore, we should build something much larger. The area at 30th Street, I've had several different estimates as far as what is the size of the lot there. I've had 20 acres to 40 acres. Several levels, excuse me. Potentially creating 1,000 or more high-paying jobs. I call this project the Martin Luther King Center Stadium. Tubular cylindrical hotel complex with parking, revolving top of the hotel King Fu Chinese Restaurant with international flavors and favorites. Indian, south-of-the-border, classic European, and surprises. The hotel itself is adjacent to the stadium, and the hotel has different amenities to it as well, as far as offering a revolving restaurant at the top. The hotel itself is about 750 rooms, and it offers Chinese food restaurant at the top. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Blanche Brown. I live in District Three and work in District One, and I know that council is voting today after public testimony to move two bills out of committee, and there are just way too many unanswered questions to move this legislation forward today. So I want to say that first. There are many reasons why I personally oppose the arena. I think it is a bad deal for Philadelphians, I think it is poor urban planning, but I'm here today to speak on behalf of a large community of artists who create and exhibit work in Chinatown. I'm the executive director of Vox Populi, a nonprofit gallery and performance venue that has been in operation, thank you, for 40 years, 20 of which we have had the pleasure of calling North Chinatown home. We work with hundreds of local artists a year, and there are many other nonprofit galleries, collectives, and individual artist studios who rent spaces in Chinatown like we do. Rent has already skyrocketed in the area. Property taxes have increased by up to 70% in Chinatown since 2013, and according to the 2024 Impact Study conducted by the city, 76 Place will only exacerbate this. Philadelphia's arts and culture sector has an economic impact of $3.3 billion, and I'm very concerned that the backbone of that economy, the artists and cultural workers who call Philadelphia home, are not protected by this CBA. This CBA falls far short for what is needed to protect not only Chinatown, but also the broader community of working-class Philadelphians affected by this deal. What is council going to do to protect the artists that I represent, to protect my organization's programming that serves thousands of visitors every year? 76 Place will not only quite literally destroy the cultural fabric of Chinatown, it will also displace and disrupt the arts economy that thrives there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Also, if you have any questions that are unanswered, you can feel free to read them into the, into the record now, if you'd like.
I think there are a lot of questions that are being my...
Okay. I didn't know if you, from your statement in the beginning, I didn't know if there was something specific you wanted to ask.
I think overall, like, everything that people are saying here today are like, questions that are to be considered, and I don't think by the end of today's testimony that we're gonna be in a place that's solid enough to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your testimony. And please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Katie DeSanto. I go by Katie A.D. I already read these proposals to fill last time I was here, so I'll try to keep it a little bit shorter today. I work at Ninth and Arch, and we are an independently owned and operated small business that's been in Chinatown for 72 years. I walk by the proposed arena site every day, and like, over 73% of my fellow citizens, I want you to reject Bill 240966 and its related bills. The city's own studies, which actually have a copy up here, predict that my business is one of the businesses that will not survive the half-baked plan for arena construction, traffic, and operation. I've been eligible to vote in Philadelphia for 14 years, and I am a pro-union voter, but I'm appalled that any of my fellow working-class Philadelphians would be willing to throw our careers, homes, health, and families in the trash in order to replace us with a few temporary jobs and increased profits for a private club for a few wealthy outsiders. I wanted to address something that was brought up by a panel earlier today. How is limited parking for arena attendees going to be enforced on 40 to 70 random days of the year? Who is paying for the messaging and enforcement of these proposed limits? There have been many nights where I've needed to use a car to take equipment to or from our small business, where I've had to sit in traffic and circle the blocks for up to 30 minutes looking for a parking spot in Chinatown as it is. So it's logical to assume that thousands of people will be trying to do the same thing on game nights, and there's no reasonable way to slice this that would eliminate the issue, that would choke out local businesses and stunt any future growth. Furthermore, I really am confused why council is allowing this proposal to be so rushed. In light of the upcoming administration's plans for sweeping tariffs, we can expect cost of construction materials to increase by 20% or more. If council approves this plan before the inauguration, demolition happens, and then, what, six to nine months from now, the price of the project skyrockets and 76 DevCor is no longer willing or able to spend the amount on the project that's necessary? We'll be left with a huge hole in the ground and no plan. If council wants to make this gamble with our future and lives, there's no good reason to do it now. We ask that you instead invest in real neighbors who already live and work here, and revisit this conversation next year, or preferably never. But if you won't do that, respectfully, next election, we will find new council members who will listen and work for the people and not for profiteering parasites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Well, Sarah Gersh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I couldn't quite hear what you were saying.
Well, Sarah Gersh, Calvin Williams, Mary Graham, and Lena Ruth Doiker, please come Again, Sarah Gersh, Calvin Williams, Mary Graham, Lena Ruth Doiker, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Sarah Gersh. All the people who have testified so far have been so impressive, I feel a little out of my depth, but I am a service industry, I work in the restaurant industry here in Philadelphia. I live in the first district, and I am disgusted that our mayor would put Philadelphians in this position. I am in the large percentage of Philadelphian residents who understand what it means to live paycheck to paycheck. So I can absolutely understand why, you know, some of our union workers and laborers might feel tempted by this proposal, or why city council or the mayor might feel tempted by this proposal. A quick influx of cash for the city sounds good. The promise of some good union labor job sounds good, and how can we turn our nose down at that when we, as a city, are struggling so much right now? We know the city needs money to fund our schools, our public transit, and our infrastructure, and we know that we need good union jobs. But let me say this, though: That feeling of how can we turn this down is by design. This arena will cost $1.3 billion to build, a price tag that the majority of us can't even begin to fathom, but let me assure you, that cost is nothing to the billionaires who want to build it. We could just magically erase $1.3 billion from the net worth of Josh Harris and David Blitzer, and they wouldn't even notice. They would still have the money to take care of their children and their children's 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 children in a lavish lifestyle forever. Every dollar of profit that gets spent from this arena will get sucked up into the cloud of their net worth and will never be circulated back into our communities again. They don't even live here. But every dollar that we spend at the businesses in Chinatown is used and needed by the people who own businesses there and gets spent back into our local communities and is being taxed properly by our city council. This project threatens the heart of one of our city's cherished communities, and again, I say it, that's by design. The more we concede to billionaires owning our communities, the more power that they have to do this next time when they're coming for your neighborhood. So please vote no.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Calvin Williams, and thank you for the opportunity. Two minutes is not a lot to bring lived experience to the table, but I'll make a stab at it. I was employed to Center City for over 35 years. 25 years plus at 8th and Market Street with a major retailer, department store. Across the street for over 10 years in the municipal service building. I know Center City from vine to pine, from river to river. I know it street-level and underneath-level, like the back of my hand. I'm also a season ticket holder with the 76ers now since 1992, and prior to that, a partial season ticket holder for five years. I just want to say that you have to live the thing in order to qualify to say it's a Philly thing. And it is a Philly thing that the neighborhoods built the Philadelphia plan, brand, and all those things. Now, in our neighborhoods, I know from experience that we can't cross the line sometime with fear of bodily harm. But as a city and neighborhoods, we found places in this city where we can be civilized and where we can act like human beings with sister and brotherly love in our fashions. Now, we find places in this city where we can live with each other like that. Name a few: The Redding Terminal, Rittenhouse Square, South Street, at one time, The Gallery. But above all of those, the most place that we find unity as communities is in South Philly, in the parking lots, before games and after games. We are family. I am saying to you at this time, and I try to be real brief because this is, this gets real personal, is that I've seen the good, bad, and the ugly with the organization of the 76ers over these years. But a lot of us in here have been coaches, or we've been in teams, we had to put the teams together for campaigns, and nowhere can I imagine that anyone has a philosophy to build a team to lose, to lose, with a philosophy saying that I have to lose consistently in order to win. What kind of culture is that? And I ask you, who do you trust? People like the old time that we had the problem with bringing up the East Market Street? I'd be real quick if I can. Please, please. In the old days, with Councilman O'Neill and with Paul Levy, when our team, when our city leaders came to this body and asked to do Market Street East, a Quaker named Stockton Strawbridge was a leader, and he brought us through all of those things and bringing in the rest of the leaders of the city. I am asking you to keep our family in South Philadelphia, bring in a soccer team to add with it, so that we can live in harmony with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Well, Deborah Zellner, Jethro Haico, Jackson Plumlee, and Adam Shellhorse, please come forward. Again, that is Deborah Zellner, Jethro Haico, Jackson Plumlee, and Adam Shellhorse, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Deborah Zellner, Professor Meredith, I'm in District Five. One of the prime motivators in approving the 76ers Arena is the number of jobs, particularly construction jobs, that it will supposedly provide in the city. On November 19th, Elaine McGuire from IBEW Local 98 told council that the 76ers Arena would provide, quote, "9,000 jobs for the building trades." I found that to be a rather high number, so I looked at what Mayor Parker had said about the agreement she had... the agreement she had reached. In her press release, she said, quote, "The arena would create over one thousand construction and operations jobs." This number is consistent with the number of jobs projected by the Economic Impact Analysis done by CSL. They project a total of 1,070 jobs for Pennsylvania, 710 for Philly. Of those 710 Philly jobs, 260 would be construction jobs. So I wondered, where did the 9,000 jobs for the building trades number come from? I found at 76place.com the following statement regarding the arena: "It will directly create plus 9,100 construction jobs for Philly residents." This is clearly not true. It appears that the numbers provided by CSL are closer to the truth than those provided by the Sixers. Something similar happened with the building of Allegiant Stadium, home of the Las Vegas Raiders. The state legislators who approved the deal were told that it would provide 18,700 construction jobs, but it turned out that it generated only 900. The people who were misled were not pleased. Given that the arena will probably generate 250 construction jobs and 450 other jobs, the question becomes, at what cost? The Community Impact Analysis found that about half, 155, of the businesses in Chinatown would be negatively impacted by building the arena. That means job loss for the people who own and are employed by those businesses. That could gut Chinatown. If SEPTA cannot get the money needed to add trains, the gridlock in Chinatown and elsewhere will push out more small businesses. Looked at that way, it isn't such a win for Philly. There's no reason to think that the arena will result in more development on East Market Street that might generate more jobs. In fact, the BJH report concluded that, quote, "impacts on Market East are inconclusive." Hoping for revitalization does not produce it. Take, for example, the Prudential Center in Newark, New Jersey, opened in 2007 and owned by Harris Blitzer. It was to revitalize downtown Newark. I lived up there. Seventeen years later, it is still surrounded by huge surface parking lots where development was supposed to occur.
Ms. Zellner, please summarize.
Please reject the building of the arena in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Jethro Heiko. I live in East Oakland, so I'm in the ninth district. I love Chinatown. I urge you to vote no on this proposal. Over twenty years ago, I connected with Chinatown activists who were fighting the Phillies' ballpark proposed for Chinatown, because I, as a young community organizer in Boston, was responsible for the successful stopping of the demolition of Fenway Park, a five-year campaign where I, me and the organization I worked for, suffered many insults from the building trades of Boston, including death threats. So I take very seriously the opposition to arenas, to stadiums, and to projects that give a lot of promises but never deliver. Of course, people may not find Wells Fargo to be as historic yet as Fenway Park, but it is an important part of the city, as we heard just two speakers ago. I found that very moving and very difficult to follow, to be honest. So not only are promises never kept, but even looking at the details of the Community Benefits Agreement, it's woefully inadequate. Not that any CBA should ever be considered if a project itself is not worthy of consideration. And this project clearly is not. It's poorly cited, it will considerably damage Jefferson Station, incredible costs to taxpayers. The idea that this is not going to be a taxpayer-funded project is not accurate. And in fact, I've attended the last nine school board meetings for the last nine months. Less than two days before the last school board meeting, the agenda item was inserted to provide a TIF amendment and to vote in favor of everything you need to then support if this project go forward. And I think that speaks to the last thing I'll say. These projects are always, always a considerable distraction from democracy, a subversion and corruption of public process. And less than two months before a Republican president will take power in the White House and do considerable damage to the city, this city council should spend their time, spend your time, doing the work of the city, including supporting and protecting immigrants, which will definitely be targeted by this next administration. And it's time to put an end to this charade. It's a horrible project, and you must vote no on it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Members of city council and staff, thank you for your time and this opportunity to speak. My name is Jackson Plumlee, and I'm a landscape architect, urban planner, UPenn graduate, and a proud volunteer member of Philly Thrive, an environmental justice organization in Grays Ferry. We're fighting for residents' right to breathe, stay, and thrive as the South Philly refinery redevelopment moves forward. I'm here because Market East and the refinery redevelopment are both generational opportunities to remake our city, and we cannot afford to waste them. Please imagine these ideas: A library, cafe, and community center with hundreds of units of affordable housing above; A community food hub with space for local businesses and childcare for their workers; Or a transformation of the fashion district into a lush garden under glass and a community space offering centralized access to housing, healthcare, and jobs resources. These ideas were just a few of many generated by hundreds of Chinatown residents, organizers, and business owners at a community design workshop in January at the Center for Art and Architecture, which I attended. Grays Ferry residents have developed similar visions for their own neighborhood and the refinery site. But despite the dedication and creativity of these communities, their ideas are often thrown away and dismissed in favor of short-sighted proposals, like an arena located to wreak havoc on our culture, commerce, and infrastructure, or a sprawling 1,300-acre logistics hub paved over 150 years of refinery contamination. Now imagine this: Thirty years from now, after the Sixers have moved away, the Skookle continues to flood higher, Chinatown's legacy businesses are replaced by Qdoba and McDonald's, SEPTA's service is cut, and the developers have long disappeared, failing to honor their CBA commitments. We're going to look back, and we're going to ask, why did we settle for these terrible ideas? Why did we prioritize easy money over long-term vision? We had the chances to plan for climate change, to preserve our culture, and to fight the affordable housing crisis, but we wasted them. Thankfully, we can still change course if you vote no. If we listen to the people, we can create something innovative, something sustainable, something truly transformative for our city. Philadelphia is full of imagination and promise, and we deserve so much better than what these developers are offering. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Adam Shellhorse, District One, 240963 is the resolution I am addressing today. Thank you for listening to me. I just wanted to take a minute and just congratulate all these speakers who have spoken their mind with regard to our beautiful community, the Chinatown community as well as the city. Thank you so much. I want to give you guys applause just for the wonderful work. What this gentleman said, what the other gentleman said, so many are just memorable, and I hope you guys go back and listen to these because I do. And there's, I went to the public hearing on the 21st, and we had a very remarkable speaker from Temple University, Dr. Bill King, a pediatrician, who spoke at length, and he said that "this is a bad, bad, bad idea," and I quote it, because he talked about how it would be the plan of a supervillain to create such event gridlock. My name is Adam Shellhorse, and I'm a Temple professor, and I made the comment that many of the city commissioners were looking at their cellphone and being distracted while the people were talking. And I really hope that you guys will listen to the people because it's so important. I know you guys are Democrats. I know you guys want and mean well for the city, and I thank you for your service to the city. But really, these testimonies mean a lot, and I hope you go back and listen and study it at length, because what Dr. Bill King said about event gridlock is probably the most serious issue at hand here, in terms of, you're going to cause death, right? You're going to create problems when you have 25-minute gridlock on night games and so forth. Another issue that I brought up in my previous study was that, you know, these stadiums are short-sighted. The DC example, the DC arena, right? The Wizards wanted to move after less than 20 years. This is a trend nationally, right? So we have to be careful when we, like, open up our city and let teams come in, because they're going to want to move out again, and what have you done? Just think ahead. What this gentleman was saying, it's dystopian, right? That all of a sudden, you've destroyed this ethnic hub that's so wonderful, we all like to go to Chinatown, and for what, for 20 years of basketball? I like what the gentleman said, keep it in South Philly, right? So I want to continue here. The story of Philadelphia's Chinatown mirrors other Chinatowns across the nation, right? After the Wizards acquired Capital One Arena, where the city covered pre-development costs to acquire and demolish properties, entrepreneurs in Washington's Chinatown voiced concerns about prices of real estate skyrocketing and parking impacts on businesses in the area. A decade later, in DC, most Chinese residents were forced to move out due to unaffordable housing. The parking shortage led to the closure of the last Chinese grocery store, accelerating the decline of the Chinese-American population in the area to fewer than 300 residents today. Ironically, as DC's arena now relocates to the suburbs, or they're trying to, the community is left behind having endured irreversible destruction while in the midst of its recovery from the pandemic. So I think DC is a very close example. We need to pay attention to that. These stadiums want to move all the time, right? And, you know, it's just, all this destruction, at what price, right?
Mr. Shellhorse, please summarize.
Now, I'm finishing right here. I just want to say, please do the right thing. Say no to the arena. Say yes to these wonderful voices, your constituents. We're keeping up with y'all. We will vote you out if you do not support Chinatown and Philly. Representative Squilla...
Mr. Shellhorse, please.
Representative Squilla, his brother is an official with the Carpenters Union, and they are making back meals, right? So we don't, you know, this kind of thing. We need to be careful. Thank you very much for Chinatown.
Well, and I'm going to struggle with this pronunciation, but I'll try Ying Jian Chen Shellhorse, Mark T. Roberts, Maria Camilleri, and Talia Young, please come forward. Chen Shellhorse, Mark Roberts, Maria Camilleri, and Talia Young, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
You can please state your nickname for the record and proceed.
Sure. My name is Mark Roberts. My wife and I are 20-year residents of Wash West. We oppose the arena. From the city council website, there is no stated purpose of public testimony, but only that it is permitted at special meetings and for specific issues. Most people would think that that's for the public to give opinion, present facts, or ask questions about the issues at hand. Also unstated on the website is what city council does with our testimony, but hopefully they consider it, and that when legitimate, answerable questions are asked, there is some way of learning the answer to those questions. In all the testimony hearings on the arena project to date, we have heard a lot of serious questions put to and some even asked by the city council. I can't list them all here, but several come immediately to mind. Why are Chinatown's objections being left unaddressed? Will there or won't there be a support beam under an arena holding 18,000 fans? Where is the guarantee our loved ones are safe in an ambulance going to the Jeff Level One Trauma Center on an event day? When did the construction period go from three to six years? If 70% of residents don't want the arena, why would trade union demands mean more to city council than those of residents, especially since there'll be union jobs wherever this thing gets built? Even with the state's new millions, SEPTA cannot support the Sixers' threshold of 40% transit arrivals to prevent crippling gridlock. So now what? There has not been an acceptable traffic report yet. Why not? Will even the council members' questions of the Sixers be answered? My testimony question is, how can the council vote yes without the answer to these questions and many others? Basically, my testimony is not questions, it's the answers. That we, where do we see the answers to all the questions that everybody's asking? Because you couldn't vote on what is present now. I don't understand how you could, you could say, "Well, yes," but we're not sure if they're going to be able to put a beam to hold, keep 18,000 people safe. So do the questions get answered before the vote? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council, for having us. Everybody, get up and stretch. We have been sitting for way too long. Everybody, get up, stretch your bodies, all of you, all of you, all of you.
You're cutting into your two minutes, ma'am.
Yes. But if people aren't paying attention, it doesn't matter. And I want people awake. My name is Talia Young. I live... Sorry. No, I have to sit. Thanks. I live in District One. I have lived in the Gaborhood for more than 20 years. My kid was born at Pennsylvania Hospital and goes to school in Chinatown, also in District One. I am a small business owner and a teacher, perhaps you can tell, but I am here today as a parent. We are here to present our petition, Parents of Philadelphia Students Against Center City Seventy-Six Place Arena, which has 600 signatures representing children who attend more than 50 schools from all of the council districts across the city. At a time when many of the Philadelphia District schools are in need of significant repairs, electrical upgrades, air conditioning, asbestos removal, it is irresponsible and immoral for our city government to consider what amounts to a $1 billion tax break to three billionaires who do not even live in Philadelphia city limits. As we know, the proposed arena is on the doorstep of two historically marginalized communities, Chinatown and the Gaborhood, and threatens their existence. Both of these neighborhoods provide our youth a safe haven from bullying, racism, homophobia, and transphobia. This arena will also impact our families and children by six years of demolition and construction, breathing toxic air, having to make alternative transportation plans through the very center of the city where all of our transit goes through, including Jefferson Rail Station, 11th Street L, the 45 and 23 bus routes, while critical city infrastructure, such as SEPTA, faces an imminent debt spiral in terms of public funding and critical cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Maria Camilleri, and I live in Council District Three, Jamie's District, and I oppose Bill 240963. I'm going to read the rest of our petition. The Sixers plan to pay zero property taxes, even though families across the city are struggling and our schools need that revenue to survive and thrive. The arena CBA offers a paltry amount of money for schools, amounting to a buck fifty per student. Shouldn't our kids be worth more than a pack of gum per year? The lack of transparency and stifling of parent, student, and community engagement exhibited by the Philadelphia School Board and City Hall are not characteristic of a true democracy. We all expect our taxes to fund children's education and public infrastructure we need, not line the pockets of billionaires. We urge our city council members to put our kids and communities first. Vote no on the Seventy-Six Place Arena. We had hundreds of comments, but we just wanted to highlight a few. One, the traffic is already bad. People will not be able to get to the hospital for emergencies. I delivered my baby in my car on Ethan Market on the way to Pennsylvania Hospital in 2022. Two, SEPTA is the school bus for a lot of middle and high school kids. A major disruption of the SEPTA system due to the construction renovation of Jefferson Station would likely have cascading effects on a broad swath of kids and families throughout Philly. Having all of the sports stadiums in South Philly is an effective way to allow easy access for those who wish to enjoy those events without negatively affecting the city center. Three, I am both a parent of a student and a teacher in the school district. My classroom has crumbling plaster and warped floors, broken desks. Why are we funding an arena that is going to do great damage to the neighborhoods of my students when our schools are falling apart? Four, I'd like to demand a provision in the bill's council is considering that no bathroom in Seventy-Six Place can have a stall door until all the bathrooms in the kids' schools have stall doors.
Please summarize.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Well, Kayla Chow, Tyler Leen... Well, Kayla Chow, Tyler Leen, Rachel Lewis, and Jacqueline Wong, please come forward. Again, Karia Chow, Tyler Leen, Rachel Lewis, Jacqueline Wong, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
State your name for the record and proceed.
Yep. My name is Rachel Lewis, and I'm a constituent of District One residing in Port Richmond. I love the city of Philadelphia and our sports teams. I'm also a homeowner and a taxpayer in the city, but most importantly, I'm someone who has grave concerns about the proposed arena moving forward. Merriam-Webster defines the verb revitalizes as "to grow new life or vigor to something." While I think we can agree revitalization of Market East is important, are we okay to give new life at the detriment and destruction of another? I certainly do not trust the process being pushed forward to rush legislation of a proposed arena that would severely impact Chinatown as a community, provide tax benefits when we have critical funding needs, propose an insufficient CBA, and strain SEPTA beyond current challenges. Earlier this year, we had schools unable to operate due to extreme heat as a consequence of no air conditionings in their buildings, and we have many schools facing closure. We should be ensuring that students have basic necessities to learn in a proper environment among many, many other critical issues in Philadelphia above pushing forward an arena proposal that will negatively disrupt our city's identity and citizens. I stand with the majority of people in Philly and ask that you please vote no to the arena proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Jacqueline Wong.
Please, please speak into the microphones.
Can you hear him?
Can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Okay. Can I start?
Yes.
I come here to speak as a union member. And an active, an activist in Chinatown. And I'm also a senior, a senior, and unfortunately, many, many seniors are not able to come to speak.
Please proceed. You didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you state your name before.
Jacqueline Wong.
Thank you, Ms. Wong.
As a senior, as a union member, I understand why people want a job. They want to have a good living. Philadelphia is a town of unions. The brothers and sisters of our unions would not have no jobs. Regardless where the arena will be built, it won't impact our, our union members. Chinatown is not just for the Chinese community, it's also for our immigrants from Southeast Asia. It's a vibrant community. So my, me personally, I go to Chinatown every week to go grocery shopping, visit my friends, and have dim sum with my friends. And it's also a place where whenever there's a holiday, that's where we gather. In my heart, Chinatown is a rather safe place. Fifty years ago, when I came, first time I stepped foot into the Philadelphia Chinatown, as soon as I got there, I felt already comfortable and I felt at ease. Public safety is of particular concern to our District Council, District Four Councilman Mr. Jones, District Eight Councilwoman Ms. Bass, and District Ten, Mr. O'Neill. We all know how important a safe place is. We do not want to bring destruction to such a safe place. Talking about myself, all my medical providers are all working in Jefferson. I'm a senior with diabetes, and I also have difficulty with movements. If you were to build a arena at 10th Street and Market Street, it really makes me feel unsafe and I'm very unhappy about it. If I were to fall or have an accident, the emergency vehicle will not be able to make it through. Without the public transit, arena is not able to be built or be supported. Just two days ago, Governor Shapiro promised to fund $153 million to SEPTA to prevent the hike in fare. However, the developers still want to use our taxpayer money to build the arena. In the public hearing held on November 19, 2024. SEPTA testified that in order to renovate the underground area of the SEPTA station to support the arena, it would require $50 million. After the arena turned, start operating, SEPTA would require additional $25 million annually to, to regulate the schedule for the crowd control. As a union member of the PFT and the principal union, in 2011, I personally witnessed the closures of many schools, including TST. Right now, the public schools of Philadelphia are facing the same issue. As Councilman, Mr. Johnson mentioned, that our public school need funding to, to build better education, better future for our kids. So the whole world knows that Philadelphians love our sports teams. I'm very concerned that regardless whether in terms of the safety issue before and after game, I'm very concerned. I feel that it's going to be quite unsafe. At the, if the arena gets to build, then for our other later generation, they won't be able to see the existence of Chinatown. It will disappear gradually. Finally, I want to say, please say no to arena in heart of Center City. Please protect and love our next generation, our Chinatown. Reduce the traffic burden for the entire Philadelphia. Improve public transit. At the end, we all have to answer to our young ones for the decision we make today.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed. Please state your name for the record and proceed. Yes.
My name is Donna Greenberg. I live in Council District Five, and I'll be speaking on Bill 240963. I'm 74 years old and a lifelong Philadelphian. I live not far from Chinatown. As a retired acupuncturist, I've spent many years in Chinatown's restaurants, shops, and herbal stores. I know what a treasure this community is. Our city is great because of the richness that different cultures provide. We must protect them. None is more important than Chinatown, which is 150 years old. It has experienced many upheavals, including the one that split Chinatown in two to construct the Vine Street Expressway. That created traffic jams, safety problems, and pollution, all of which will result if the proposed arena is built next to Chinatown. Deafening noise, destruction, and debris will confront residents and businesses in Chinatown if they're forced to live through years of demolition and construction. This will make it hazardous for those who live and work in Chinatown to get around their community. Local patrons and tourists will stay away. Traffic will be heavier than it already is. Children will find it difficult to walk to their schools and neighborhood centers. This unique community will be torn apart. Its welcoming, lively atmosphere will shut down as 50% of local restaurants and businesses stand to lose revenue. This will make it unaffordable for people in Chinatown to live and work, leading to their displacement. One of the few remaining Chinatowns in the United States could disappear. Please say no to the arena. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Well, Yannick Trappman O'Brien, Sarah Heim, Samantha Xander, and Lauren McCutcheon, please come forward. Again, that's Yannick Trappman O'Brien, Sarah Heim, Samantha Xander, and Lauren McCutcheon, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you very much. My name is Yannick Trappman O'Brien. I'm a West Philadelphia resident in the third congressional district, and I work most days in Center City. The CBA claims it will provide funds to leverage new economic opportunity. But what is the lived cost of that opportunity? Who will pay for it and who will benefit from it? In that first panel, we heard people talk about the importance of being neighborly. On top of all the disruptions previously mentioned, the residents of Chinatown, the Gaborhood, Washington Square West, they've spent decades building intangible value with each other, just like everyone here has done in their own neighborhoods, right? When we know our neighbors, when we make a ritual of having dim sum with our friends, when we know which houses have the best candy on Halloween, when we know exactly how long it will take to get to the corner store and grab one thing off the shelf and get home, when our children go to the same school building we did because it was not shut down, these are real things that materially benefit our lives. They have value. The CBA offers a limited financial investment, one they don't really want to budge on. But you can't just turn money into any of these things that I've described. Even with funding, rebuilding connections, living through years of traffic and construction and pollution, fighting to keep residents and businesses from being priced out to make sure residents feel safe in their neighborhood, working to not let the unique character of our neighborhoods become what we've heard described today as half-baked and boring Qdoba's and McDonald's, all of that will take time, all of that will take energy and work. And the 76ers management will not do that work. Residents will have to. And who will compensate them for that? The issue before us is not a referendum on just one development project. This is an auction, where we are debating the market price of the value that Philadelphia's neighbors build with each other. And when developers inevitably come to see what profit they can eke out of your neighborhood, they will look to these proceedings to see what they can get away with. So I encourage every council member here today and every resident of Philadelphia to listen very carefully to what each council member says with their actions, because they are telling us exactly what they think our neighborhoods are worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Heim. I'm a lifelong Philadelphia resident from East Mount Airy, District Eight, a Central High School graduate, and a current Penn student in Urban Studies. I'm here to testify in opposition to the proposed arena. The proposal itself and the entire process surrounding it has been utterly disrespectful, not only to the Chinatown community, but to all Philadelphians. The mayor announced her endorsement of the plan long before hearing public testimony and after repeatedly denying invitations from community leaders to visit Chinatown and discuss the proposal there. Instead, she continues to call last-minute meetings at City Hall even on the night of the Mid-Autumn Festival. Mayor Parker and the developers don't even care to know the community they are intent on destroying. The developers have continued to insist that the arena will benefit the city, even after their own impact report demonstrates the expected harmful effects on nearby neighborhoods. Community members have expressed worries about displacement, noise pollution, and poor air quality from construction and traffic congestion. Instead of responses to their concerns, residents were offered Sixers tickets in the community benefit agreement negotiated between Mayor Parker and the developers without their input. They consider the dispossession and suffering of Philadelphians to be a viable business venture. Philadelphia does not tolerate this disrespect. 76 Place is just one of too many development projects that claims to know what's best for Philly. Chinatown has spoken. Philadelphia has spoken. City Council must listen. We do not want this arena. Don't let these billionaires or their political mouthpieces tell you otherwise.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Samantha Xander. It doesn't look like my district council member is here, and we're missing others, so I do hope they listen later. I've waited a long time to speak and am missing work to do so because I believe passionately in this issue. I live and pay property taxes in District One, and both me and my husband own businesses in this district. I'm a double temple alum, and my law firm services disabled residents of Philadelphia and beyond. Our child attends McCall, the public elementary school, in the catchment of the proposed arena. We are Sixers fans, including my 12-year-old, who loves basketball, plays it almost every single day, and loves our team and goes to games. This is not about that. It's about the billionaire team owners who don't live here, who think they also own our city and can do as they please with it. When we first heard about this project, we had so many questions and still do. How could Center City possibly deal with that amount of traffic and parking? How would this type of project work when it caused chaos in other cities and destroyed other neighborhoods? Are they even listening to residents, business owners, and Area Trauma One hospital workers' concerns? Why knock down a newly-built, state-of-the-art, affordable, family-friendly movie theater and arcade that we frequent? How green is this project really? How will seasonal, part-time, low-paid jobs that folks just went on strike over contribute to and better our local economy? Why can't the builders get paid building somewhere else? How will they address? How will they address the burden it causes with construction, traffic congestion, pollution, drunk drivers, and costly SEPTA modifications? The answers to these questions and others are not good. You still have questions. Unfortunately, the billionaire owners won't even sit at the table with you to discuss them, and the answers the representatives gave you were unsatisfactory. But this shouldn't be surprising because this is how they do business. It's about these billionaires making themselves more money. It's not about our city's best interests, our revenue, and it never was. The CBA was a unilateral agreement with zero community input. I don't know why it has the word "agreement" in the title, as I was taught my first day of contract law, a contract requires a meeting of the minds. Last year, some Sixers representatives came to McCall unannounced to parents, guardians, and community members. Chinatown residents make up sixty percent approximately of our student population. David Adelman showed up and took photos with our principal and staff. The Sixers took unauthorized pictures of our kids, getting five-dollar gift cards and adult-sized T-shirts thrown at them, pictures they ended up having to take down from social media because parents were upset about how this played out. This non-consensual behavior is in line with their plans to bulldoze over the rights of our communities without us having a seat at the table. Just like it was a joke to give out junk to our staff and kids at our beloved public school for a photo op, the CBA is also a joke and we are not laughing. As you know, a vast majority of Philadelphians oppose this project. I hope you are reading the comments sections whenever a news source reports on the arena. It is the most unpopular project I have witnessed in my lifetime in Philly. And this is the first time I have felt compelled. I pay my taxes. I will finish my last paragraph. I have felt compelled to speak before council. Our schools, public transit, and housing systems are... I'm wrapping it up. Our schools, public transit, and housing systems are in crisis. And little things like SEPTA paying for passes or other menial measures won't fix it. Excuse me, Sixers paying for SEPTA passes and other menial measures won't fix it. And we are entirely uncertain what challenges the new federal administration will bring to our beautiful city. She needs protection and well-thought-out plans. I urge you to follow your hearts and instinct that something isn't right here. Slow down this process. Don't let them steamroll the city with bad deals that were never deals in the first place because they were never negotiated. Mayor Parker admitted that she did not ask for more money. I hope... Last sentence. Thank you. I have hope for my kid, my family, his friends, their families, and our community's safety, future prosperity, and well-being. These billionaires do not have any of our interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Would Lauren McCutcheon, which I may have called once, Sergio Seiya, Eric Kim, and Eleanor Hyen, please come forward. Lauren McCutcheon, Sergio Seiya, Eric Kim, Eleanor Hyen, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Sergio Seiya. I use El He Him pronouns. I'm the political director of Reclaim Philadelphia, which is headquartered in Chinatown at Ninth and Cherry. And I'm speaking to you while on PTO that I earned through my union contract under SEIU 668. Like many, I'm furious with how Parker administration has approached this process. The community was never involved in negotiations over this terrible deal that only benefits billionaires, and neither was City Council. No one thinks the CBA is as strong or as powerful as it has been described. And as a Latino person and a queer person, our communities aren't even reflected in the CBA. I know this isn't just being forced down the throats of residents in Philadelphia but council too. I empathize with y'all. I do, because I know City Council members feel impotent right now, not having their schedules cleared out, not being able to introduce legislation for the change Philadelphians can see and feel. Instead, weeks wasted on a pet project for billionaires. As a political director, I have to note that Democrats suffered a landslide defeat this election. And it was because the Democratic Party has been more invested in protecting the status quo and muddied interests instead of delivering for working-class people. This arena, if passed by City Council, will just be a reflection of greater problems in the Democratic Party. Last week, I heard a lot of great and tough questions from council members. If you don't negotiate for a better deal, how will you be able to look Philadelphians in the eye with a straight face? If you vote to support legislation now, how will you ask Philadelphians for their vote when they remember you sold out the last community of color, all to line the pockets of billionaires? While we are struggling to make ends meet, while we are facing displacement from predatory development in black and brown neighborhoods across the city, our SEPTA pharaohs will go up seven point five percent starting December first next week. And SEPTA has said that the Sixers' arena will cost SEPTA twenty to twenty-five million a year. And the funding Governor Shapiro secured recently won't cover that, and it will only last us months, not years. Right now, we should be doing everything in our capacity to deliver for Philadelphians struggling, to regain the trust of voters for the midterms and beyond. We should also be using this time to prepare for and fight back against a Trump administration, protecting anyone who's at risk from losing their civil rights or reproductive freedom. The next election, we will know how you voted and what you prioritize. There is still time to decide. Which side are you on?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Esteemed council people, hearings chair, and staff, my name is El Hyun. I'm a resident of the Third District. After this most recent election, I've been thinking about 2020, a year that also brought a lot of uncertainty and fear. In the midst of that fear and isolation, I started playing pickup volleyball with a small group of friends. So four years later, this team is still going strong. We have membership from many neighborhoods and diverse backgrounds in Philadelphia. And for someone like me, this team actually means a lot. I moved here eight years ago, and I don't have family in the area, so people in my life like this team are the people I rely on to feel less lonely and to also get help when I need it. And I know this team would not exist in the way that it does without Chinatown. Every Monday, we meet at the Crane Chinatown Community Center to play a match. And during the summer, we... Some of our members play with the Ladies Suns volleyball team, which is a part of a fifty-year-old youth sports organization in Chinatown. I'm talking about this because I think it demonstrates something really important, which is that healthy communities protect and support other communities. And communities are what are going to get us through tough times. When our support networks are compromised, we see the consequences down the line. We see more substance use. We see mental and physical health crises, and we feel that we live in a less safe city. When one community is injured, it hurts all of us. So please, council members, and I'll speak directly to my district representative, Jamie Gattie, who is here. Please know that when you vote on this arena, you are not choosing between distinct interest groups. Chinatown, labor unions, Washington West, you are voting for all of us. Although I can see the appeal of short-term financial and employment gains that could come with this project, economic analyses and SEPTA's recent statements against the arena have convinced me that these gains will be short-lived and outweighed by unforeseen costs in the long run. I know the city needs more funds and more jobs. Let's meet those needs with a project that will support our communities and not tear them apart. Philadelphia deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Will Christina Morton, Emily Goddard, Min Wen, and Anlin Wag come to the table, please?
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and you may proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Morton, and I live in District One, the same district as the proposed arena. While I worry about how this project would affect the area I live in, I want to take a second to talk about an arena in a different area of the city, the proposed football stadium at Temple University, which was brought up earlier in this meeting. You'll find a lot of similarities in community response in these two cases. A coalition of North Philadelphia churches and community groups quickly organized to oppose this project. In 2018, the president of the Philadelphia chapter of the NAACP said, quote, "Nothing can be worked out in North Central Philadelphia where residents are already there, where it would further disrupt the community from Temple's expansionist policies that have already taken place," unquote. The stadium stompers, a group made up of North Philadelphia community members, students, and workers, said, quote, "North Central Philadelphia has historically been a neighborhood of black residents, and if there is a massive stadium built on top of that neighborhood, it is going to displace people directly and raise the land and housing prices," unquote. Polls showed that fifty-eight percent of students opposed the building of the stadium while thirty percent were in favor. For faculty, sixty-eight percent opposed, while only twenty-three percent were in favor. Right now, polls are showing that around seventy percent of Philadelphia residents are opposed to the proposed arena we are here to talk about today. The Temple Football Stadium was not a done deal when it was announced, and this Sixers' arena is not a done deal either. Philadelphians do not want stadiums. We want money for SEPTA. We want school funding. We want community health resources. We want stable, well-paying jobs, not the kind of seasonal, low-wage jobs that stadiums create. Looking at the community impact analysis of the Seventy-Six Place proposal, a report commissioned by this very city government, researchers drew a couple of conclusions I would like to highlight. The report says, quote, "Impacts on Market East are inconclusive. With or without Seventy-Six Place, the area will continue to face significant challenges to development and vibrancy." This stadium is not an insurance that this is going to revitalize Market East. It also says in relation to Chinatown, quote, "Due to impact on labor markets and small businesses, Chinatown's core ethnic identity could be significantly diminished or lost," unquote. I urge City Council to consider the message they are sending to this city's residents, the ones they are meant to represent, if they vote to go forward with a project like this. We are not stupid. We see this project for what it is. We know the community benefits agreement is not sufficient. Thirty-seven dollars per month per business over six years of construction is insulting. It's crumbs the ultra-wealthy are offering in exchange for the chance to make millions off the back of this city's residents. The people of Philadelphia refuse to be bought, and I hope the City Council members refuse to be bought as well.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Goddard. I live in District Three, and I'm speaking on Bill 240963. I have a master's degree in public health with a focus on environmental health, and I oppose the proposed arena project. You've heard from numerous medical professionals about how the arena would hinder ambulance access to Jefferson ER and cost patients lives, but I also want you to consider the less-visible health impacts. We've heard about the trouble of who is paying for the SEPTA updates. Without a clear plan for how SEPTA would function around the arena, gridlock traffic is highly likely at at least half, if not more, of arena events. Recent studies have found that in the U.S., gridlock accounts for over $124 billion in total economic costs, eight point five million tons of CO2 emissions, and over fifty hours lost by the average commuter annually. It causes local businesses to struggle, hinders delivery services, and increases individual stress. Traffic is also the biggest source of air pollution, which is responsible for up to ten percent of premature deaths in the U.S. each year. And it can also lead to cardiac, respiratory, and even neurological health problems. More gridlock in Philly from the arena means more time wasted, more economic losses, more carbon in the atmosphere, and more Philadelphians choking on smog. We are also in a growing climate crisis, which is causing more extreme weather events, such as our current drought that's bringing wildfires and smoky air to Philadelphia. The construction sector is the largest emitter of greenhouse gases, accounting for thirty-seven percent of global emissions, which also causes air and water pollution that have negative impacts on health. Whilst sustainable arena development is very much possible, as we can see with Seattle's Climate Pledge Arena, Seventy-Six Devco has made no mention of incorporating any sustainability measures or practices into the construction or operation of Seventy-Six Place. This arena can't be world-class if it's massively contributing to climate change, which the WHO calls the greatest health threat of our time. We had economic and traffic impact studies, but we also need environmental and health impact studies too. I urge City Council, please don't vote to approve this project. Take the time to negotiate with Seventy-Six Devco to build sustainably and put environmental health protections in place. I love Philadelphia, and I care so deeply about this city and the people in it. If we truly want a cleaner and greener Philadelphia, we need to stop this rush process. Please, City Council, don't vote to approve a project that would not only take money away from our schools and our public transit, but also harm the health of every Philadelphian. Thank you.
State your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Min Wen, resident of the Second District under City Councilman Kenyatta Johnson. These have been such incredible testimonies. Everyone has been so inspiring today. My name is Min Wen. I am a Realtor with Ketter Williams &amp; Power, with over two thousand Realtors in ten offices in five states. We serve clients in PA, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, New York. Out of the eleven hundred Ketter Williams franchises across North America, we're number two in production, projected to close over $4 billion in total volume production this year, and we're number one in recruitment. I served as the Technology Chair, DEI Committee, and Finance Chair. I'm on the DEI Committee of the Pennsylvania Association of Realtors and a member of the Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors. I'm also the Secretary and Policy Chair of the Local Chapter of the Asian Real Estate Association of America. We have forty-five chapters, nineteen thousand members, fifty-one ethnicities, and twenty-six languages in North America. Lastly, I'm on the board of a political organization that elects LGBTQ candidates for office, and we've endorsed several candidates, several members of this council. I've been a judge of elections for over seven years in the Fortieth Ward. So I just want to say I'm speaking today independently, and the views and opinions expressed in this testimony are of my own. Let me just start by saying that we must be a city that has the courage to do big things. We believe that housing is a human right, that we envision a world free of housing discrimination and free of homelessness. We must create housing and real estate infrastructure that supports individuals and communities of all socioeconomic conditions. And we must invest in smart and holistic developments, affordable housing, commercial mixed-use corridor revitalization, and infrastructure projects, and transportation hubs to positively impact all communities. The Chinatown community has had a history of organizing, from the Vine Way Expressway to two casino development proposals, the anti-bias violence in public schools, and now to the Seventy-Sixers' development. Y'all are incredible, and shout out to all of the work y'all have been doing. It has been so inspiring. Their courage, resilience, and power has been felt throughout the decades, and I stand with you. As a Vietnamese-American, Chinatown has been core to my identity and awareness as an Asian-American, and the neighborhood has been instrumental to my identity as a Haitian. We have reviewed impact studies and reports summarizing the assessments of the impact on this arena. And I've compiled, after research and consultations with Chinatown developers and small business owners, some concerns and some demands. So real quick, concerns. Number one, impacts on the spirit and legacy of Chinatown's culture, organizations, and communities. Impact number two, parking, traffic, and the transportation system. Impact three, quality of life and environmental ecosystem of Market East residents and businesses, Chinatown, Washington Square West, the neighborhood, and other communities. Four, impacts on the healthcare system, including Jefferson. My sister works in a mental health nonprofit, working on services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and she has expressed her discontentment with the development and its impact on victim services. Yep. Impacts on city services, impacts on the viability of sustainable jobs, and impacts on small business owners and the artificial inflation of property assessments, which will increase property taxes and also increase rents, which might lead to displacement of tenants in Chinatown. So there are ten demands, and I'll submit this to the public record, and I'll send this to your emails and also to your offices. But voting against the development proposal in December nineteenth, renegotiating terms and conditions, to include the community organizations and CBA meetings and negotiations, appropriate allocations and accountability of the $50 million community benefits agreement, three, policy, create police substations, safety networks, four, feasibility studies, and mandates the construction scope of work and cost review by CSL to be approved by the city's finance office, five, implements tax abatements, exemptions, freezes on existing buildings, and OPA oversight and monitoring on the assessment schedules, six, connect parking bridge to Chinatown, the subdivision development to incentivize business traffic from the stadiums to Chinatown, implement rent control or rent mitigation standards, and constructing of a civil engineering plan for the traffic and safety routes for the hospital systems. Thank you so much, and thank you for everyone's amazing work.
Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Christmas, please call the last panel.
Edward Bell, Brandon Blue, Kimberly Cook, and Terrence Washington, please come forward. Edward Bell, Brandon Blue, Kimberly Cook, Terrence Washington, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and begin.
Hi, I'm Edward Bell. I live in District One, and I am here to talk about Bill 240963. I'm an architect and a member of Queen Village Neighbors Association. I'd like to talk about quality of life in Center City. I came to Philadelphia thirty years ago, and I have done residential, commercial, and institutional work in my life here when my wife was admitted to Pennant after hearing Ed Bacon speak about city planning in Philadelphia and his work to improve Center City, its livability, and his efforts to integrate its public transportation systems. His plan was successful and turned around the decades of neglect and abandonment, which made Center City and Society Hill livable again, and for that he was recognized nationally and featured on the cover of the Time Magazine 1964 edition as the Man of the Year. Coming from Colorado, I was used to car aesthetic and owned and drove too, not because I wanted to so much as because I needed them for my work. With my arrival here, I was immediately struck by how easy it was to get around in Center City. City, and I gladly gave up my cars and became an urbanite. We decided to move into Center City and to rent an apartment later by a house and started our professional lives here rather than move back to the place I considered home. Why, you might ask? Because it worked. It was convenient. Center City was walkable, a walkable 20-minute city, a pleasant place where people could walk from home to work. We didn't own a car for about 25 years. My wife walked to Penn Hospital at Athan Spruce from our house in Queen Village to deliver our first and second sons. I make these points because we're short on time, and you will either understand what I'm saying or scratch your head in disbelief that a nearly carless lifestyle might be desirable. If you are the latter, you probably don't live in Center City. And what we have not heard from these developers is how their plans will make our lives better, more pleasant, more convenient, richer, or more productive. And I think the reason is they probably know that putting an occasionally-used arena on Market Street is equivalent to putting a cork in the middle of Center City's transit system. Importantly, it will also endanger the lives of patients trying to get urgent medical attention during peak traffic times. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, please do not give up our gains. I urge you to think of the greater good. The relocation of Sixers Arena to Center City will benefit few and do little to make life in Philadelphia better. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is On Lin Wang, and I live in Councilmember Phillips District. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the arena proposal. I've been in Philly for the last dozen years. I'm proud to call this place my home. I'm particularly proud of this City Council for standing up for Philadelphians against the threat of Donald Trump in this past election. And one of the things I'm concerned about with the new Trump administration is they're going to start this new department called the Department of Government Efficiency, designed to impose mass cuts to public supports across the country. One of the guys that's selected to lead this department has said that he is inspired by the current president of Argentina. Said he's going to make that guy look like a moderate. This is a guy who, in one year, has increased the poverty rate of Argentina by 50%. That is the threat that we are facing here in Philadelphia, as well as the poorest big city in this country already, a stat I hear cited in these halls all the time. But instead of preparing for that threat, I am dismayed to see this current mayor's administration try and push through another project just to support billionaires and their small group of investors and cronies, instead of the working people of Philadelphia. That philosophy is what lost the Democrats this election to begin with. It is frustrating to see it continue. But that said, I have hope and faith that this City Council will see the light and reverse course on this arena. Another reason to oppose the arena, though, is the guaranteed destruction of Chinatown. What the Sixers and the arena advocates have brought forward is that, no, 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 we have the CBA, it'll protect Chinatown. But a CBA did not protect Washington DC's Chinatown, and that's because nobody is forced out of their homes at the barrel of a gun. Rather, they're forced out of their homes by the attraction offered by the free market. Imagine you are a working or middle-class person. All of a sudden, your home, your business value doubles in price. Who wouldn't say no? We've worked so hard our whole lives to take care of ourselves and our families, and so that's the, and for that same, and so that's why that offer is irresistible. Last thing I'll point out here real quick is look at the turnout. Where is the pro-arena crowd a few hours into the hearing? They're not here. And yet, in the evening hearings, they're all packed with people who oppose the arena. Why is that? Because it's a life-or-death struggle for us. So, this fight is guaranteed to continue as long as the arena project continues. When the arena bill is dead, then you'll get all your peace back. Thanks very much for your time, and please oppose the arena.
Thank you very much for your time. Please state your name for the record and please begin.
Terrence Washington. Thanks for having me. I moved to Philly just two years ago to work at the Free Library of Philadelphia Foundation. I used to run One Book One Philadelphia. I live in District 3. Hello. My first year here, we read the book Interior Chinatown, and everyone who was in council at the time has a copy. And we chose it in part because we felt like some of the conversation around the arena proposal assumed that Asian-Americans or Chinatown residents more generally were less American or less Philadelphian than everybody else. That's wrong. It's terribly messed up. I'll say again, I mean, look, you should listen to Mr. Calvin Williams, you should listen to so many people who've said much more important things than I am about to say about the schools here. But I'll say, as a transplant, I grew up in South Carolina as a fan of the Charlotte Hornets, Larry Johnson, to be specific. A city can survive a team leaving. The Sixers are betting that Philadelphia will give whatever they want to keep them from leaving. Charlotte got another team in two years. They got the name back and 10 more. It's doable. I guess the last thing I'll say is that I don't actually think it's possible to have a fair deal with billionaires. They become billionaires by turning all of our resources into their money. We're all in here on a workday discussing how much we should let them lower their tax rate when they're going to go and get what ends up being our tax money from the state and the federal government to try and push through their project. This whole thing has been insulting. I would say that if I were in a union, I would be incensed at the way this process has happened, and I wouldn't wish it on anybody else. Late meetings, no information, all of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name, and we begin your testimony.
I want to say first and foremost, thank you, Council President Johnson and council members, for allowing we, the people, to speak on this proposal arena. Hello, my name is Colleen Ott. I'm of District 9. I am the Autistic Art Coalition of Philadelphia founder and CEO. I am a retired EMT of Philadelphia and the tri-state area of 13 years. Our second location is in Chinatown at 112 North Eighth Street, inside a Liberty Resources, where I am a consumer, too. Two years ago, the city of Philadelphia set the standard as the first certified sensory-inclusive city in the United States as being a beacon on the right hand of history with autistic neurodivergent and/or intellectual disability individuals of all ages and all walks of life. This past weekend in West Philadelphia, at the Lucian Blackwell Community Center, I had several conversations with people. I asked the question, what do you think about the arena? Including community partners such as the Philadelphia Autism Project, who had the same concises as 40 others I had conversations with, from north, south, east, west, Philadelphians who opposed the arena proposal. But one person did not, was not in agreement of the arena from November 1st to this day As a disabled individual, this causes disruption, not sensory compliant. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great day. Peace.
Thank you, Colleen. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
My name is Kimberly Cook, and I live in the 3rd District. And I'm actually not reading the testimony that I had prepared for today. I would like to instead respond to Councilmember Bass's, who's not here right now, question earlier about all of the unanswered questions. There is a lot, so I'm going to read very fast and fit in as many as I can in my time. Why won't the billionaire developers give a single dollar more than the measly $50 million CBA? Why did the city just accept developers starting position from 2022? Why is the mayor refusing to negotiate a better deal? Why were councilmembers not invited to the CBA negotiations, who are supposed to be present in those spaces to represent their constituents? Why were the impacted communities not involved in the CBA? Why are the Sixers refusing to share their sublease with the city? Why are the Sixers' job projections so wildly different from the city's projections? Why do they keep lowering projected revenue that they think they'll make? How many new jobs will the arena actually create? What kind of jobs will they be? Permanent, full-time? What is the net impact on jobs when we take into account lost jobs? What happens if the Sixers don't honor the EOP? Why should we trust their EOP when in 2024, only 3% of the Sixers' suppliers and vendors were certified minority-owned? And why should we trust them when they only employ nine people from Camden, when they promised to employ 250? Why should we give up over $400 million in property taxes to three billionaires that should be going to our schools? What is the city's plan for when the arena wipes out $100 billion in tax revenue from small businesses near the arena? How can we guarantee that traffic will not impact people in dire health in emergencies trying to get to Jeff? Who is paying for the $25 million increase in necessary additional annual funding for SEPTA? Who is paying for the hidden costs to upgrades sidewalks, street lamps, trash cans, and other infrastructure costs? Who is paying for the additional city worker staff that will be necessary for trash pickup, trash enforcement, and street maintenance? Why is City Council relying on an economic impact study that admits it, quote, "should not be relied on"? How is the comparison of arena drivers to New York City realistic, when only 46% of New Yorkers own cars compared to 71% of Philadelphia? How much of our state tax dollars will the Sixers be seeking? Why are so many aspects of the Sixers' master plan not fleshed out? And without an absolutely 100% complete, cross-checked, clear plan, why are we even putting this up for a vote? And why are we selling out our city for an insulting $50 million to a few billionaires against the will of the people?
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Good evening, City Councilmen and staff. My name is Brandon Blue. I am from Montgomery County. I am an upcoming architect, and I have been working with local architecture firms such as Design Philadelphia and Philinoma. I am also a recent graduate at Temple University. For the past two weeks, I did some research regarding the economic impacts of constructing a downtown arena. Using sources from many different articles and peer-reviewed essays, I have found some damning evidence from which it is imperative to share with the City Council and the people of this great city. Based on the sources from J.C. Bradbury's "The Impact of Professional Sports Franchises and Venues on Local Economies: A Comprehensive Survey," the universal consensus is that there are no significant positive impacts regarding to the construction and operation of a downtown arena. Therefore, there are no significant economic impacts to their surrounding communities after the arena has been built. Proponents of the sports arena typically exaggerate the financial benefits that gain more support from city officials to help fund these projects. Team owners and proprietors use the people's support for their favorite team to blind them from the truth. The truth being that construction and stadium operational jobs are mostly temporary and do not provide enough wages for substantial financial security. Local communities and businesses are at risk of displacement and could suffer from negative economic impacts if local businesses do not pertain to sports-adjacent businesses like bars, restaurants, and local entertainment. With the addition of this new arena, local communities will lose their identities, and only 20% to 50% of businesses might survive. SEPTA, Philadelphia's primary provider of public transit, is an authority that is devastatingly underfunded. Even with the government's flexing of highway funds to SEPTA, it would still nearly impact the authority. It would have to bear the massive cost of renovations to Jefferson Station and the increased demand for new trains, all for a whopping $20 to $25 million. And do you honestly think for a second that only 40% of people will drive to this arena? Oh, okay. Considering that the United States is an extremely car-dependent nation, traffic healthscapes in the city would be overwhelmingly guaranteed. So, for all these reasons, I cannot in great consciousness support this arena. And the community funds go from $50 million to $100, to an insulting $130 million, and it's just, the funding is completely unclear, unprecise. And to the black and brown communities who support this project that will always be disenfranchised, always be displaced by billionaires who intend to always keep us out of earning even a quarter of what these billionaires make, why? Why are we trusting these billionaires who provide gentrified communities with jobs and economic security? In fact, one of the owners of the Sixers, David Adelman, was literally the guy who caused the gentrification of the predominantly black community to stop student housing for Penn's campus. Wait, just one more thing. And let me be clear. If you have not learned anything from all these incredible, clear testimonies against the arena today, I want you to keep this following statement in mind. If you still wish to approve this arena, you are denying the integrity, dignity, and genuine opportunities to not only Chinatown, not only the black and brown working-class communities in the city, not only the school districts, not only SEPTA, and not only the healthcare providers, but also the entire community and you councilmembers. Supporting this would support and sustain the moniker that Philadelphia is the largest poor city in the U.S. So, let's be clear, this is not NIMBYism. These are real concerns. So, let us be real that these promises are fantasy. Thank you.
This concludes the hearing for Bill 240963 and 240964. There being no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses on the list to testify. I want to thank all the witnesses who came in today for their participation. We surely value your opinion. We will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on Bills Number 240963 and 240964. Mr. Christmas, will you please take the role?
Councilman Swilla. Council Lady Gardier. Councilman Jones. Councilman Young. Councilman Driscoll. Council Lady Lazada. Council Lady Ahmad. Council Lady Landau. Council Lady Brooks. Council Lady Bass. Councilman Phillips. Councilman O'Neill. Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Harity. Councilman O'Rourke. Council President Johnson.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Christmas. The Court of Members Committee is present. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squillen for an amendment to Bill Number 240964.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move, I offer an amendment to Bill Number 240964. Copy amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee, and I move for its adoption.
The Chair notes for the record that Councilmember Thomas seconds the motion. All those in favor who consented by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the amendment to Bill Number 240964 is adopted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squillen for a motion on Bill Number 240964 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number 240964 as amended be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and that the rules of council be suspended as to admit the first reading of this bill at the next session of council.
The Chair notes for the record that Councilmember Driscoll seconds the motion and has been moving property seconded, that Bill Number 240964 as amended be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Can we take a roll call vote? Three ayes. Still for the record, do a roll call vote. Councilmember?
Councilmember Squiller.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Council Lady Gardier.
Can I offer a brief comment before I register my vote?
It's up to the chair.
Thank you, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
I remain undecided on the arena project overall. I remain committed to participating in an engaged manner in all of these proceedings and in giving whatever input I can as these negotiations go forward. However, at this point, I have too many important unaddressed questions and concerns to vote to move any legislation out of this body and my vote is nay.
Thank you.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Excuse me for a second. We let everybody have the opportunity to give their public comment respectfully. Can we just conduct the business in a respectful manner? That's all we're saying, that's why we set it up for a tremendous amount of opportunities for people to come down and give their perspective pro or con as we go through this legislative process and I just ask that respectfully. Please call the roll.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Council Lady Lazada.
Aye.
Council Lady Bass.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill is absent. Lady Gilmore Richardson is absent. Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Council Lady Amad.
Aye.
Council Lady Landau.
Mr. President, I would also just, just, I would like to...
Second.
Briefly.
Thank you so much, briefly. Uh, I remain committed to all negotiations. I am currently undecided, but for the, uh, the unanswered questions and the lack of, uh, support and financial resources for the impact of the communities, I'm a nay.
Was that a nay?
It's a nay.
Council Lady Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman O'Rourke is absent. Council President Johnson.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The ayes are ten, the nays are three, the motion carries.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squiller for motion on...
Where's my... No, nothing. Oh, here.
Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-four as amended will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, suspension of the rules to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Squiller for motion on Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-three reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and for the rules of the council, council be suspended to permit the first reading of this bill at the next session of council.
The chair notes for the record that Councilmember Driscoll seconds the motion. It has been moved in properly seconded that Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-three be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? For the record, it's the same three that opposed the first, the initial bill, right? That's correct. So for the record, the ayes are ten and the nays are three. The ayes have it and Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-three will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and a suspension of the rules to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. Um, this concludes the business before the committee of the hold for today. I recognize Councilmember Squiller for motion to recess the public hearing on the following bills. Two-four-zero-nine-six-six, two-four-zero-nine-six-seven, two-four-zero-nine-six-eight, two-four-zero-nine-six-nine, two-four-zero-nine-seven-zero, two-four-zero-nine-seven-one, two-four-zero-nine-seven-two, and two-four-zero-nine-seven-three to Monday, December the second, two thousand and twenty-four at six P.M.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
It has been moved in properly seconded that the public hearing on Bill number two-four-zero-nine-six-six, two-four-zero-nine-six-seven, two-four-zero-nine-six-eight, two-four-zero-nine-six-nine, two-four-zero-nine-seven-o, two-four-zero-nine-seven-one, two-four-zero-nine-seven-two, and two-four-zero-nine-seven-three be recessed to Monday, December the second, two thousand and twenty-four at six P.M. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries that the public hearing on Bills number two-four-zero-nine-six-six, two-four-zero-nine-six-seven, two-four... We're not finished yet. Can we quiet, please? Two-four-zero-nine-six-eight, two-four-zero-nine-six-nine, two-four-zero-nine-seven-o, two-four-zero-nine-seven-one, two-four-zero-nine-seven-two, and two-four-zero-nine-seven-three stands in recess until Monday, December the second, two thousand and twenty-four at six P.M. Thank you all very much for your participation today and have a blessed Thanksgiving.